Welcome. I'm going to call to order the Merrimack School District's school board special meeting for April 18th, 2024. Will you rise with me for the pledge of allegiance? I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight again. It's always wonderful to see the public come to the meetings. Before we open it up for public comment, however, I wanted to open with a couple of opening remarks, just to clarify a few things, since this is a very unusual meeting for Merrimack. Tonight is a difficult time that we are going to align the budget with the will of the voters, and every decision that's made tonight is going to affect everyone up here in one way or another, just as it's going to affect everyone out there, one way or another. But we have come together as a community to work together and move forward under the default budget. That being said, I'm going to ask Chief Education Officer Bill Olson a couple of questions. Will you please share with us what you shared on Monday about athletics as they are related to tonight's recommended reductions?
Yes, thank you, Lori. Sometimes when there is a difficult budget period and a town does not pass a budget that is presented, some people take somewhat of a retaliatory approach, that a scorched earth approach, that well, we'll, in response to the vote against our budget, we'll, we'll cut all athletics, we'll cut all music, we'll cut all art. It's not going to happen here, okay? In our reductions, quite honestly, we have chosen not to make reductions to athletics because for some students who may not experience as much success in the classroom as they would hope to, the athletic field, the basketball court, the hockey rink, the swimming pool, soccer field are very important places where they stay engaged and where they connect. Now, some people may not like that approach, that we did not cut sports, but I have to tell you, we have, I think, 30 or 31 different sports that result in about 72 stipends being paid. And when I take a look at the average stipend, the average stipend is only about $2,600 per sport, per person, excuse me, per, per coach or assistant coach. And so unless you cut essentially all sports, which is not on the table, and it's never going to be on the table, you can't achieve the savings that some people think you can. Likewise, we don't cut all art, cut all music. Believe me, I've, I've been through budget cutting sessions for 40 years, seen an awful lot, heard an awful lot. What we don't want to do is we don't want to penalize students, period. So what we've done is we've tried to take a systematic approach, look through the entire school system, pre-K through grade 12. Where can we make some reductions? Knowing that some programs will be impacted, some students may receive some different or lesser services, some staff will either be reassigned. Fortunately, I'm, I'm pleased to say that, I think as of right now, only two do not have an assignment for next year, because we've been able to, through very careful planning, place people in jobs for which they are certified and completely qualified, but that results from retirements and some resignations. So I'm, I'm pleased to say to you, we have met the objective. We've tried to do as, as little damage to the school district. We entered the meetings, the budget reduction meetings, with the leadership team, saying we will start this process as a unified leadership team and a unified school district, and we will end this process as a unified school district, trying to do as little harm to students and to staff for that point as possible, so that, you know, when we get to the point, we will go through the budget reductions, we'll explain them as thoroughly as possible, we'll answer any questions as thoroughly as we can, because we want everyone to know what the result of our budget reduction process is. Once again, we understand, it's a democratic process. Those of us who have been in municipal and school department positions for many, many years understand that we go through cyclical financial periods. We have periods where we, we have sufficient revenues to provide services and to grow and develop our system, and we have other times where we, we can't do that. And this is one of those times where we face the reality where we, we can't do that. But we're going to keep a quality school system together to the greatest extent possible, and we'll move forward.
Thank you. Will you also share with us why we're having this meeting tonight, what deadlines we're facing, and why we have to make the decisions so quickly?
Yes. As you can imagine, the staff are quite anxious at all levels throughout the entire school district. We have a vacation period coming up this next week. Contracts are due to our staff on May 1st. So we need to make the decision so we know with certainty the impact on students, but also the impact on staff, so that we can offer them contracts with, with certainty. The importance also is that, you know, our town election is a little bit later than many other communities. So we're at a disadvantage in terms of hiring people, and we don't want to do that until we know exactly which direction we're going with the budget. So contracts need to go out from May 1st. We need to advertise and hire people, and the longer we delay that, the, the thinner the applicant pool becomes. And by thinner, I mean numbers and quality. So we'd like to have you vote on this tonight, so we can move forward as quickly as possible.
One last question, and this is for Assistant Superintendent of Business Matt Chevanel. Will you share with us why we can't simply shift funds from the revenue side of the unassigned fund balance over to cover the difference between the proposed budget and the default budget?
Sure. When the people voted not to support the budget, they voted for the default budget. So we have to, on the appropriation side, come up with a number that matches the default budget, okay? We also have a fund balance. We can't supplement that shortage with fund balance. That's on the revenue side. That goes back to reduce your tax rate. To take $2 million from unassigned fund balance is not in keeping with the spirit of what the voters wanted to have happen. They were looking for tax relief. If we make these cuts and we try and apply fund balance on the revenue side to it, number one, I, I really can't do that, and number two, it's not in keeping with the spirit of what the voters wanted. They wanted tax relief, we're going to give them tax relief, and any fund balance we have is going to go back to reduce the school portion of the tax rate to give them that which they voted on. And if we don't do that, that's kind of like backdoor budgeting, and I don't think that's an ethical thing to do, and from an accounting standpoint, it's not a legal thing to do. So I hope that explanation was somewhat clear. It's a convoluted topic, because you have revenues on one side and appropriations on the other. We have to make tonight the appropriations match what the default budget was, and it's not proper to take revenues to supplement that, because that's going against the will of the taxpayers because they wanted tax relief. Thus, they voted down the budget. For us to do anything otherwise, I wouldn't feel good ethically, and I've been in this business for over 30 years, and I have never done such, nor have I ever heard of anybody in any school district, town, or municipality do that type of trickery, I would say, and I'm, I don't want to be a part of it. So that's why. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. With that, I'm going to open the floor to public comment. The microphone right there at the back, we are going to spend 15 minutes on public comment before we move into the presentation. When you come to the mic, please state your name and address. If you are a student, no need to say your address, and be mindful of comments that are being made. We want to be respectful to each other as we listen to one another, and also spend our time as wisely as possible. So the floor is open to the public.
Chuck Mower for Depot Street. I have been a elected official in the school district for a good many years, and I have tried my very best to understand my community and to encourage my community to do perhaps more than they understand. But I've been here long enough to know that there is a frequency modulation, and when people are upset, they tend to react. It's very, very difficult to give the kind of relief in this day and age that upset people are really looking for, and I say that broadly speaking across the town. Things cost what they cost, and we have experienced a very convoluted idea of appropriations and cost and so forth since COVID, and we are trying to recover from the insertion of government money and difficult circumstances that people never experienced before, and we had to provide adequate support for them in, in a new way that we had never considered before, and, and all of those things. So I'm happy that there is a reconsideration in the community of what should take place in their name, and I think every elected official I know or have known is going to do their best to understand that and to translate it to the benefit of the town of We have another year ahead of us that is different, and I'm looking forward to it. I know that there are things that are exceptionally complicated, that people don't want to readily understand, they would like all of us kind of people to handle it for them. For instance, we have been trying to get people to work in Merrimack. It's very, very difficult to get adequate staff. As Superintendent Chevanel pointed out, the rest of the pool goes to other districts before it comes to us because of our odd timing and, and the circumstances. That's what people complain about constantly, is that I can't get anybody to work. You know, we scratch our heads because it's a great economy, and wages are up, and inflation is under control at the very least. I mean, all of the indicators are wonderful, but we cannot get people to work. But we know that we need those people, and we have to budget and appropriate for those people, even if they never show up and we don't get to hire them. And that is in part what leads to a surplus. Not mismanagement, not overspending, but the circumstances of life in general at any given moment. We experience it in our own lives, and we experience it in our municipal lives as well. So I just want to say that I'm a member of the budget committee. I'm looking forward to working very hard to reconcile our circumstances and provide the things that we need for our students, for our community. I mean, we are, I think, the second largest employer in the town of Merrimack. There's a great deal that goes on here, aside from teaching children new reading programs. This is a very important institution that is marbled into the meat of our community. So much happens in the school district that benefits everyone but is relatively hard to see. School district makes its facilities open to the extent that they can for any other municipal use, anybody that wants to go down there and have a room to meet, whether it's a new church, or whether it's a men's league, or, or whatever. There, there are any number of different services that are provided beyond the idea that some people may have about one thing or another being too high or too much or whatever. And of course, the ultimate is that the school district only has one source of revenue, and that's the property tax. And we are not allowed in the school district to overspend our budget. So if we have a surplus, in the case of COVID and so forth, that, that racked up a lot of surplus, because there was a lot of money trying to do things that we could or couldn't do. And now, several years later, I mean, we find ourselves in the position where labor, which is our biggest cost, is very hard to come by, and so it generates a surplus. But when that happens, that surplus is required to go back to reduce taxes. So the school district never overspends its authorized budget by the school voters. It cannot by law overspend, and it cannot by ethics and morality circumvent the will of the voters. The voters give you one clear message once a year. The rest of the time, a responsible school official has to try and understand and make judgments about the community that they live in. So the message is clear. The legislative mandate of the school board and the budget committee, I'm sure, will happily carry on, taking a very close look at how this has affected us, and we will propose another budget next year that tells the voters what they need to hear to make a choice, and they do need to make a choice. And so I'm very happy, oddly enough, to be in this position where I know my school district is going to work on behalf of all of us. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Heather Robitaille. I live at 45 Springfield Circle. I just wanted to recognize how difficult of a process this is going to be, and yes, emotional for people in this room. I think one of the things that I heard from the last meeting from our community is that we really want to understand the thought and the process behind this. So as we go through these cuts and have this discussion and conversation, I'd like to ask administration and our board to have those dialogues that will give the community more information and understanding on how these cuts were arrived at, and obviously they are all going to impact a number of different people in a number of different ways. But I think if we are more aware and the process is more transparent of what conversations may have happened, what opinions may have been discussed, and the impacts and other alternatives that were looked at, it will help everyone understand where we are and why we're here. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, we are going to move on, and we are doing something a little different tonight. We are going to listen to administration's presentation. The board will ask questions, clarifying questions and questions to expand on the impacts and things like that as well. Then we're going to have a short time of public comment once again, once you've heard the presentation. After that, the board will then have our discussion and vote as well, and then there will be public comment again after that. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to administration.
Thank you. And we will project the proposed reductions up on the screen. Amy and Matt will, will join me in terms of filling in the blanks where I have missed any information to provide to you. But I do want you to know that prior to this meeting, over the last couple of days, we have had conversations with all of the people, all of the staff, who we anticipate will be impacted by these reductions. The worst thing we could do is have them hear it via the media, through a meeting. That's disrespectful to them, and we wanted to make sure that we had those appropriate conversations. They were very, very professionally done on both sides, by the staff member and by the administration, and I want to thank the staff members for their patience. First reduction that we have listed is a, we're able to reduce our request for the Jamie's windows by $200,000 for the next fiscal year, because we have a situation that forces us to do that now. The windows, we anticipate, and Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, are approaching three months in terms of lead time for fabrication, and therefore for, you know, installation, even perhaps a little bit longer than that. So we can't wait. We do not want to enter the school year, having that project just beginning, hopefully not even halfway through, we want it completed, and so we need to act on this immediately. So we're somewhat forced into this, and out of something that is of concern to us that needs to be done right now, turned out to be a benefit in that we are able to reduce as part of the nearly $2 million, this $200,000 appropriation that was approved by the voters by the delivery session and by the voters for the, for the windows. If I may, Matt, go ahead.
Yeah, if you, if you wouldn't mind. As, as Bill stated, this is something that's imperative to do, and when I talked with Tom Tussow, he said the lead time was like two months. So this is going to be done out of this year's budget, and it's going to be done out of one of the maintenance lines that we're going to purposely overspend, and we're going to make up the difference in the bottom line. So we still will not go over budget with this $200,000 expenditure out of the 24, 23, 24 budget, okay? It's just not going to be appropriated for in the 24, 25 budget, because we need to get it done now.
We discussed the windows a couple of months ago during budget season. Could you briefly just remind everyone why it's a critical need?
Well, what's, what's happening and what's happened over time, I think these windows are probably original to the building, that section of the building, because that building consists of probably around six or seven different additions in various locations at various times. The first one was in 1948. This is the 1948 windows. Those have been long since replaced. But these are metal, metal windows that are pitted, that have holes in them, that are not secure anymore, and they have rust, and they have some rot on them, and they need to be replaced now. It was identified during the budget season, but at this point in time, we just have to get this done. We can't, we can't trust the security of our buildings with these windows. And as an interim step, we'll probably take some measures to try and secure things up so we're safe, but they need to go, and they need to be ordered now in order to get them to done for next school year. We can't wait till the July 1st to order these, or else the delivery and the installation will be probably in November, December timeframe, and that's just not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. The next two items that impact Masochola Elementary School are based on enrollments. At the preschool level, we will be reducing a staff member due to a, what we see is a decline in the preschool enrollment. We've been in touch with our principals and also our special education director, and we are evidencing a decline in enrollment in the preschool. Now, we don't know whether that's going to be long-term or not, but we know that for the foreseeable future, at least for the next year, two years, we don't see an increase in the preschool enrollment. Similarly, at the kindergarten level, we had added a, an additional kindergarten teacher for a projected enrollment increase, keeping in mind that when we did the enrollment projections, we did those about six to seven months ago, preceding the beginning of the budget process. Things change. We look at the trends over a period of time, over the last six months, it does not appear that we will need that additional kindergarten teacher. Just to let you know, the method behind enrollment projections is we use a method called cohort, for, for years, demographers have been using the term cohort survival ratio. We, we prefer to call it the cohort progression ratio. What I do is I check with the town clerk each year to, to understand the number of live births. I look at a seven-year, along with Matt, because Matt is, has been working on demographics for many years also. We look at a seven-year trend of, for example, how many births in a year five years after that wind up attending kindergarten. The preschool and the kindergarten enroll, enrollments are always the most unreliable to project. Once the students are in school, and there is a certain degree of unreliability between kindergarten and grade one also, because some students attend private kindergartens and then come into first grade in, in Merrimack. From then on, from grades one through 12, we have a, a good idea of what the ratio of progression of students is. For example, if there are 100 students in grade one, and then those 100 students become 100 students in grade two, that cohort progression ratio is 1.0. If there are 100 students in grade one, and over a seven-year average, we see that there's an average of 125 students in grade two, that cohort progression ratio was 1.25, all right, which means we see an increase, for whatever reason, over a seven-year period. So we don't look at just one year, we look at, we tend to look at five, six, seven-year averages, so that we can begin to see some consistent trend. So the fact that we would be reducing a preschool teacher and a kindergarten teacher, the kindergarten teacher being newly proposed in the budget, is not entirely unusual. It's because it's very difficult to project with certainty those enrollments at those particular grade levels, and I'll be glad to answer any, you know, any questions on that.
If I could just, Matt, mind if I chime in?
Sure.
Yeah, this is, this is the model that Jim O'Neill, some of you guys remember him, used to be superintendent in this district, handed over to me years ago, and like Bill said, we look at grade, grade project, progressions, how second grade goes into third grade for like four or five years, there is a factor there, and it's a good predictor. Overall, in the aggregate, we've been really pretty darned close. We've missed it by like maybe 10, four, five kids over like 3,000, 3,200 kids, but sometimes you get a surprise. This year, Reed's Ferry kindergarten was a surprise. We were not expecting the extra 30 kids that came in, and it was like, what is going on with the water in Reed's Ferry? All of a sudden, all these kindergarten kids came streaming in. We're assuming that that maybe is a trend, and maybe that kindergarten class is going to be there, but it's a guess. We're not going to know until they, the bodies actually come through the door. And our district registrar that we have is tracking this for us in new registrations, and we'll try and figure out exactly where everything lies. But there, there are some aberrations on it, but on the whole, in the aggregate, you know, if you're predicting you're going to have 3,900 students, or back in the day, 5,000 students, you're only off by a couple of kids, but it all depends where they land on the grade levels.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah.
The next two reductions apply to the high school. Over the last five years, we've seen a, a decline, and not a precipitous decline, but we've lost about 125 students in enrollment at the high school over the last four or five years. And at some point in time, you come to the realization that we can begin to trim down the staff in, in certain areas, and we are proposing that we have a reduction of a staff member in social studies. in social studies and a staff member in science. Those classes will be absorbed by the remaining staff in those two respective departments. Keeping in mind that, and Amy, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the class ratio, even with these reductions, will still be somewhere around 25 to 1, if I recall correctly.
It depends on what students sign up for, but we will still be under the state requirement in the science labs. I know that was a concern by everyone, especially the, the science teachers. We'll still be able to keep under that ratio, but yes, they'll be manageable.
Yeah, the, if we're, you know, the state allows up to 30 to 1, do not want to exceed 30 to 1 of the grades essentially six through 12, middle school, assuming a middle school consists of grades six, seven, and eight, and a high school is about 30 to 1. 25 to 1 at a high school is very, very good. It's a very, very good ratio. So we feel confident we can make those reductions without any significant impact on students. We have a retirement, resignation, excuse me, in one of our high school library assistants, and we believe that work can be reassigned to the two remaining library assistants without any, any loss of productivity and work in terms of their ability. They're very efficient. The three staff were excellent. The two can absorb that remaining, remaining work. Next, two, very much numbers-driven. We are going to sunset Mandarin, and we're going to sunset Arabic. Let's take a look at Mandarin first. We are, have just not seen in Mandarin, and certainly not in Arabic, any increasing numbers. There have been declining numbers in those two areas. We have a, an excellent teacher in Mandarin who is also certified in mathematics, presently a .8 full-time equivalency. Will be going to a math position, but also maintaining a couple of sections of Mandarin. And so she will be working in two areas, but predominantly in math, and will be a 1.0 full-time equivalency. She's very enthused about that, and we are also, Amy, I don't know if you want to make any more comment on that?
I just wanted to talk a little bit about what sunsetting means, what we were trying to do there, and Heather, I appreciate the feedback about talking about our conversations. So if there's more information that anyone wants, you know, let me know. What we were really talking about is there are students currently in Mandarin 1, 2, 3, currently there are 20 total students in Mandarin. We want to make sure that the students that are in Mandarin 1 have the ability to complete their three languages, the three-language requirement, either through graduation or their college requirements. So preserving Wa, who's the Mandarin teacher, she will be able to provide instruction to the students that are currently in 1 through Mandarin 2 and 3, and then similarly in Arabic, we will maintain that teacher to be able to allow those students to complete their three or four years should they, you know, request it or want to do that. But sunsetting means that we won't offer Arabic 1 or Mandarin 1 next year, and then over the course of the next two years, we'll phase it out. But both of those staff members will still be at Merrimack High School to be able to provide instruction in that language.
Yeah, I do have questions. Is this the best time? Later's for discussion, now's for just questions. Okay, so when you say those students will have an opportunity, is it going to be, is it going to look different than it looks now? So for a kid who's in Mandarin 2 or 3, and they want to take 3 or 4 next year, is it going to look the same next year as it would now?
So this year in Arabic, right now, there is a combined class, just because the numbers are so small. So Arabic, right now, there are two requests for Arabic 2, and two requests for Arabic 3, and no requests for Arabic 4. So Arabic 4 wouldn't run, there are no students that have requested that. So we certainly could run Arabic 2 and Arabic 3 separately, but we could combine that and offer one class of Arabic.
As it's already been combined.
And it has been combined 3 and 4. It's not atypical for those upper-level languages because it's a lot of project-based learning, and, you know, you're really looking at more complex text structures and languages, but, you know, he, right now, Mr. Dufau, has taught 3 and 4 together. Similarly, with Mandarin, there are two requests for Mandarin 2, five requests for Mandarin 3, and eight requests for Mandarin 4. So we would speak to Wa and also the needs of the math department to talk about, you know, would it make sense to at least combine the class that only has two kids?
Yeah.
You know, just so that you can have conversation, and, you know, many of you have been teachers, so you understand that the importance of having more than one other student in a class to be able to do project work, collaborative conversation, and things like that. So we would certainly want to do what's best for the students, working with the director of counseling, Principal Claire and his team, you know, they, they really are, and will do the best thing for students, and that may be combining some of those, those courses.
Yeah. I'm really grateful that you are taking the sunsetting approach, because knowing what you just said about Mandarin in specific, for the first time ever, they're going to have eight kids in Mandarin 4, which is huge, and felt like such a success, does sound like the downstream from that is not much, but for you to allow that to move forward, I think is so meaningful for those kids, because Mandarin 4, they're on the cusp of going to college, and they want to be able to finish. So I'm very grateful that we're taking the approach with both of those languages.
I have a, I have a question as well. I know that for the future down the road, V-Lax offers Mandarin 1, 2, and 3. Will we, in our guidance department, if students show an interest, if there's one or two kids who want to do that, will we encourage them to take that opportunity?
I, I don't see why we wouldn't. We allow V-Lax courses of all different, you know, from all different content areas. I think also continuing to have Wa on the staff, she could certainly do an independent study. That's part of the power of the ELO, is that, you know, we have someone on our staff that could easily teach that, should a student be interested.
I was just going to say, that was going to be my question, is since we are retaining these two teachers, could we, through our Extended Learning Opportunity Program, offer Mandarin or Arabic to, or, to students who are interested who haven't yet done it, so?
Yeah, it's been my experience that the high school staff goes above and beyond. They want students to explore areas that they're interested in, and I can't imagine a situation where they wouldn't at least try to work with a student within the confines of, of what is, you know, possible within a school day.
So I just want to clarify, because, just piggybacking off of Lori's question, I'm assuming with languages, it's a little different, because I know at times the guidance department is strongly discourages V-Lax if there's something available at Merrimack High School, but because we don't offer that language, and they don't want it, they're not going to be said encouraged to try to take French, Spanish, or Latin, which will be all that we have left. If they want to do something different, that will be encouraged and not discouraged, I'm hoping.
I, I, I'm not a school counselor, and we can certainly, you know, have Kay, I can have her weigh in, or, you know, any member. I think a school counselor knows the student that is in front of them. V-Lax courses are extremely challenging, so I, I don't know of an instance where a student has been discouraged from taking something if the counselor thought it was something that they could manage. School counselors, our schools counseling staff spends a lot of time talking with V-Lax. We have students that start courses, and they are, are very challenging. So the difficulty with that is if you're in a course, you know, say Mandarin 1, and it doesn't work out, and you drop the class come December, you're not now on track to have your language credit. So I don't, it wouldn't be my thought that the school counselor would say, you know, you shouldn't take Mandarin. I think they look at the student in front of them and think the student has good time management, they have strong executive functioning skills, they will know about the course itself to know, you know, match the student's strengths with, you know, with what's happening in the course. If we are offering, say, AP chemistry, I can see why, you know, a school counselor might say, we have two very qualified chemistry teachers, but if it doesn't fit within their schedule, you know, I, I think that provides students and their families' voice and choice around what courses they would take. I think you will still hear school counselors encouraging students to take as many classes as possible at Merrimack High School, because that helps build connection and relationships, not just with their peers, but also with the, the teachers that are there for them.
In a similar manner, because of declining numbers, we are proposing the elimination of Arabic at Merrimack High School. We will be reassigning the teacher of that course to another assignment within the, within the high school. Once again, our intention is to sunset that particular course, allowing students in 2 and 3 to continue with the teacher. If you have any questions, we'll be, we'll be glad to answer that, but it's very similar to our position on, in Mandarin. We have had an outstanding staff member who has served this district extraordinarily well for many years, who actually at one point in time was an administrator at the high school, and has had the position of a math coordinator at the middle school, and this person has decided to retire. And we are going to reassign those responsibilities to a math facilitator at the middle school, who we think will do an excellent job. Absolutely thanking the person who is, and I don't mind telling you her name, Cheryl Smith. Cheryl has served this school district with great dignity, great professionalism for many, many years, and we will miss her greatly, and we will, as I said, reassign her responsibilities to a math facilitator at the middle school level.
Bill, can I add something to that?
Yes, certainly.
So that structure of a stipended position is in place already, K to 6. We have math, science, and social studies facilitators at every building, and the job of that person is to almost function like the department head for that content area in that building. They facilitate curriculum conversations, look at data, visit PLTs, talk about best practices and things like that. We have several very strong middle school math teachers that I think could take that on. You know, keeping with the theme of what else we considered, I was actually really excited about the possibility of looking at this position through the K to 8 math specialist lens. So as we go into the budget process next year, we have talked about, we put reading interventionists in place. That was a huge move for us last budget cycle. We had talked about putting some math interventionists in place. So I don't think this will be a long-term reduction. We need some infrastructure related to mathematics and intervention and oversight, but this was certainly not the time to do it. But, you know, I, I do hope to bring something similar forward for us to discuss in the fall.
Our next proposed reduction is a special education teacher based on the fact that we have an open position. Looking at our numbers, we feel strongly that the responsibilities for our students can be reassigned to the remaining staff at the, at the middle school. We have, at the middle school, also a digital learning specialist. We are eliminating that position and reassigning that staff member. We're looking to put that person in a tech ed position. Think that would, he would do an excellent job in the tech ed position. But sometimes, sometimes positions in school districts kind of run their course, it doesn't mean that they're any less important now than in the past, but I'd like to think that with, with the demographics of our staff, and we, you know, we, like many other school systems, we hire a lot of staff who are recently out of college, who have grown up with technology, who have used technology very proficiently, oftentimes in this day and age require less coaching. So we think we can make this transfer from this position of the staff member to a tech ed position, and will bring great value to our students.
Can I add something?
Sure.
So you might be asking, what is a digital learning specialist? So back in the day, it used to be called a curriculum or technology integrator. So it was a classroom teacher typically that would elevate to a teacher leader position. Through the DOE, it's an, it's an instructional specialist license, so you have to have a, you know, a base license, so to speak, so elementary ed or English Language Arts 7 through 12, and then you, you prove proficiency, or you've taken additional courses to learn more about how technology can be used to leverage higher-level learning practices. At the middle school, this person does not have a, for those that are used to like a computer class, he doesn't work with students on a special rotation or on a schedule. He is available to go in and support teachers and students to integrate technology into their learning. So if you think about it as, he's an exceptional person, he was a language arts teacher at the middle school, but this is not a, a loss of instruction to students, and actually he will move back into a classroom instruction position, as Bill was talking. The tech ed program at the middle school, you may know, has been without that second tech, tech ed teacher for the last two years. So Mr. Costa will move into that position and be able to use his skills on a daily basis with all students.
You know, I'd just like to point out that what we do on a continual basis is reassess our priorities. Reassess where we are with programs, reassess where we are with staff, and I'm actually quite excited about this particular change, because he's an excellent teacher, excellent staff member, and we think it's going to greatly benefit students in a, as Amy said, in a more direct instructional capacity. Our next reduction is a reduction of all, of the world language experience at the upper elementary school. As you know, when you asked us to cut a million dollars from our original budget request, seems like forever ago now, we did that, and we cut the French position. We are also going to be cutting the, the Spanish position. Now, keeping in mind that the, it is more of an experience than instruction, more, somewhat of a cultural-oriented type of approach, the benefit, quite honestly, that accrues from making this reduction is that students will have more experience in the other unified arts, such as art and music, okay? So there, you know, with some loss, there is some gain, and so we think this will serve the students at JMU's very well. You know, we obviously still continue our languages at the upper, at the middle school and high school, but we think this is, this is a reduction that I feel strongly about in terms of, I think it's, it's beneficial to our students, based on the nature of the program, and this is no editorial about our teaching staff. Excellent, excellent teachers. It's the way the program was constructed. And so I do believe they'll receive more benefit by having more time in the other unified arts. And Amy, I don't know if you want to comment on that at all?
No, I, I think, you know, we had talked earlier when we did the initial cut, that students at MU's had three sessions of 12 days of a language, and so you're really eliminating 36 days of, of Spanish, but extending the amount of time that they're in art, music, PE, from about 12 days to maybe 15 or 16.
Our next reduction, and this is probably one of the more challenging ones in terms of reflection of parents', reflection, your reflection on it. We are proposing eliminating the gifted and talented program at the elementary level, MES, RFS, TFS, and at the upper elementary. You will see about eight, seven of eight entries down is the TFS and RFS, gifted and talented reduction. This is one of those areas that sometimes you need to make difficult decisions in terms of what you think needs to be done, in terms of more focus on direct instructional services in the classroom. The fact that we have a very small number of students, that does not mean that they are less important than any others, okay? In terms of receiving some instruction, some enrichment, but this falls under the category that really something has to go in terms of a program. You know, we, we cut originally with the million-dollar reduction a couple of months ago, the high school program. And I think it's, it's the nature of the programs, the way they were constructed, what's happening in them, although we have excellent staff. We feel it's more prudent to eliminate those programs. We can work with the teaching staff in terms of enrichment activities, differentiation, but this is, this is probably one of the more difficult for parents, and for you, and we, and we understand that. But once again, there was nothing easy about making decisions here, and Amy, I think, we have the numbers, if I remember correctly, I believe there were about 35 to 40 total students.
Yeah, so I think we've talked a little bit about our gifted and talented process. So we identify students that are eligible for pull-out gifted and talented services. We start that at the end of second grade, and those services begin in third grade. We start that at the end of second grade and those services begin in third grade. So we offer pullout services to third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade students. And so right now, the numbers are, there are seven students at Reed's Ferry that receive those pullout services. There are 10 at Thornton's Ferry that receive those, those services. MES, five students. And at J Mews, fifth grade, and I asked Ms. Ryan to separate them, there are 10 students in fifth grade. So that equals 32 kids that would be getting that service next year. We do have 15 students in sixth grade, but they're moving on to the middle school, so we're really talking about next year. Now that is the pullout gifted and talented. We do have a very robust enrichment program, which is different. So if you look at our gifted students, they get about 90 minutes a week. It's either two sessions of 45 minutes or three sessions of 30 minutes. It's really depending on the schedule and the building. So those students would no longer receive that 90 minutes of service. Now the enrichment groups are a little more flexible. There are some students that are in a literacy or STEM group and that usually ranges about 40 to 50 students per, if you think about it like a rotation. Once you're in a group, you may not be in the next group, or it might be a STEM group this time and the next time it's a literacy group. And those teachers do try to involve as many students as they can. So the enrichment group population is much higher, about 88 between Thornton's and Reed's and then about 75 at, between MES and, and Mews. And again, that's more of an, you know, a little bit of an extra boost. Those students, I just also want to make clear, did not qualify for the pullout gifted and talented. So we're still around the 2% to 3% of the population that is gifted and, gifted and talented. But we've tried to include as many kids as we could in those enrichment groups. And just in conversation, thinking about, you know, what else did we consider, really looking at our co-curricular activities and thinking about ways to leverage more of them next year. I know that the, the board, as well as the budget committee, has been very supportive of those co-curricular activities at the lower elementary and that's fairly new for us. But really thinking about ways that we could offer them more, that we could expand the offerings because what those students are doing during the day could absolutely be done and could be enjoyed by more students if we offered that after school.
So I have a question along those very lines. So we have discussed with the gifted and talented program at the middle school and the high school, revamping that program with the existing staff to meet the goals and desires of the students in just a different, unique way. Are you saying that with the co-curriculars, we can reach more students, especially our students who maybe, maybe they weren't here to be tested, maybe they weren't here to qualify, or maybe they were on the bubble, but they're very academically gifted? We, we can revamp a program through our co-curriculars that would benefit more than we're currently?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see why we couldn't. And it's interesting, both of those teachers participate in the co-curriculars, so they would be familiar with that. We, you know, are hoping to retain both of them, at least one of them is looking to return to the classroom this year anyway. And I would be really excited because it's a very small population of students and we have kids that have lots of, of talents. Maybe they don't score in the 98th percentile or the 95th percentile, you know, proportionally or statistically, they're not considered gifted, but they have talents that they can enjoy. And I will say those co-curricular activities at the buildings are extremely popular. They fill up very quickly. We could offer them, we could offer more sessions of them if we were able to, you know, revamp or, you know, increase the funding for them because we do pay each of the teachers that run those co-curriculars a small stipend after school. And, you know, I know some of you have, you know, Thornton's kids, MES kids, who maybe they have participated in those co-curriculars. And, you know, I, I do think that that is an opportunity that we could leverage.
And I'm guessing those stipends would be significantly less than the total number of the, listed on this sheet?
Yeah, I think altogether, when we were looking at, you know, the gifted and talented on this paper, and Matt will correct me if I'm wrong, is around $225,000 for those 32 kids when you look at the salaries and the, and the supplies. That's significant and it was a real challenge, I think, to look, you know, one of the things that I think was a core value when Bill, Matt, and, you know, the leadership team met is that we were really trying to look at how these cuts are going to impact, but also trying to impact the fewest number of students and $224,000 for 32 kids, that's about $7,000 a student. And not that that, again, to Bill's point, it's not that it's not important, but it's significant.
Yeah, when you look at this list, you'll notice that there, it's, it's more than the $1.9 million that we need to cut. We did that on purpose to give you an opportunity to work within this list to see if there are things you'd like to put back.
So I think the obvious question that has to be asked here is, you know, while all of that makes total sense, how are we going to meet the needs of those 32 students? Right? Because we know if we lose them, if they're bored and they hate school by fifth grade, it could be hard to get them back. So how do we make, what, I mean, I'm assuming there's a, I know that sort of our model for gifted and talented is outdated. Is there, is there, are we looking at a new way of doing this? I mean, how, how do we plan to meet the needs of those students? You know, if I was a parent of one of those students, that's what I would want to know.
It's a really good question and I think it's something that once you make your decision, if this is a cut that's on the table and you give us the directive to, you know, look into that, I, I do think that some of, especially at the lower elementary level, some of the programs that we're bringing in allow for higher level enrichment opportunities. For example, at the last meeting, we were talking about wit and wisdom. Wit and wisdom has, in each module, has additional literacy opportunities and explorations that kids can avail themselves of. We also have opportunities in our new science curriculum and math curriculum to be able to offer enrichment opportunities. Will those students get 90 minutes of pullout service in a small group? They won't. So to be able to replicate that exact service, I, I don't think that's possible. I think it'll be important, you know, this is not a surprise, we have students at all levels of engagement, right? We have some students that are not in the gifted and talented program that are in the top 10 and, you know, possibly will give a speech at graduation and they're not in GNT or, so I do think that there are opportunities that students, depending on their own intrinsic or extrinsic motivation, will push themselves. But we will have to look carefully at individual students, just like we do with any student that's disengaged, whether they're gifted and talented or not, and try to find ways, you know, to, to pull them in and to have them be active participants in their education. But to be able to provide that exact service, we wouldn't be able to do that.
Yeah, and I wasn't thinking about that exact service. You know, I, I think most of those parents aren't hung up on that exact service as much as they are making sure that when their child goes to school, they're not sitting through, I mean, I put random example, but like a math lesson, that their kid is already, you know, knows how to multiply whatever, whatever, but they're sitting through a whole math lesson that they can literally already do, right? So how do we, you know, and, and I know this is just good teaching, differentiation. Scrolling down, I mean, I getting, we're getting ahead of ourselves, but I know we're, you know, I just want to make sure maybe, is there professional development for teachers and how to be better at differentiating instruction? What are the best practices these days? And talking about the MTSS system for academics, not just behavior, how we provide tiered support to all students and meet them where they're at. And that doesn't just mean the low kids, it also means the high kids.
Absolutely.
And I know you understand that. I just want to make sure that we're, if we're pulling something away, that we're putting in support for staff, that will, that will directly impact the ability. I know what, thinking through this, when I was thinking through it, wit and wisdom was the first thing that came to mind. I've heard from so many people how rigorous it is and that will benefit those high level learners. We want to be able to make sure that benefit is there in math and I want to make sure that we are training teachers who are already experts at differentiation, but giving them the most recent best practices that they can use to meet the needs of all learners, especially, you know, these that we're, we're pulling some services away from.
Yeah, and I would also just want to point out that right now, the majority of the gifted and talented services come out of what's, what we call a win block, what I need. So we have moved away from the model of taking students out of core instruction just because that's not best practice. Students should not come out of their math class for a standalone lesson because then when they return to the classroom, it could cause confusion, even if they already know multi-digit multiplication, they, you know, you wouldn't, we don't have a gifted and talented, you know, self-contained classroom. It would be, you know, when you can meet with that student. So I don't see any reason why enrichment opportunities can't continue to be offered during win time. We will still, we still have lots of kids that are already getting that service. It would just be organizing that amongst the classroom teachers that are offering that. So typically during a win time, you would have a teacher that would take students that need help with a particular skill. Say they're working on subtraction with regrouping. Someone might have a small group of five students, they're really just working on solidifying that skill. At the same time, a student may be, you know, doing some very simple, basic pre-algebra, you know, because they're ready for that. I don't see a reason why that couldn't continue. It would just take more planning and preparation on the behalf of the, of the professional learning community for that grade level. Thank you.
Please know that we, and I know you know this, we recognize our responsibility to, to sufficiently challenge all, all of our students. Not only those who are in need of additional help, but those who really have shown quite strong academic progress and we will not forget those, those students.
And one of the things we learned from the first round of these cuts is really part of the gifted and talented program is the, are the connections and the, the social emotional support that those students find in, with other like-minded or likability or like interest groups. It's sort of like being on a sports team for them or being in a musical ensemble. And so we, we are committed to continuing to find ways, you know, to, to support students in that way, whether it's through a lunch bunch that the school counselor can do, thinking about other ways to, you know, provide them with opportunities to, to build that community.
One of the reductions, one of the changes in assignments and reductions that you'll see down towards the end of the list will be a direct benefit to the students, particularly at J Mews and MES, and I'll, I'll get to that in a, in a few minutes, so we'll talk about that. The, talking about the social emotional support for the students. Going to lump the next three together, technology reductions. These are devices, peripherals, et cetera, that quite honestly, we're just tapping the brakes for right now. Nothing is going to end for students. We still, we'll have a one-to-one environment, but we're just holding off this level of expenditures for the next year. We will reevaluate, perhaps bring them back the following year, perhaps have a different array of devices, peripherals, infrastructure, items to address that Jason and, and Matt would bring forward. Matt, do you?
Yeah, this is a six-year plan. This isn't just, here's a list of stuff we're going to do this year. This is a six-year plan and it's well thought out. But with changes in technology and everything moving to the cloud and the cost of having, doing that, you know, this may change. So we feel comfortable in making these changes, these reductions in the budget. And, you know, you have to remember, we do this, the budget process seems like it takes a year, you know? I think, feel like we started this back in September and we're still talking about it now. So that, technology changes is a very rapid pace and Jason is on top of every piece of it. I think everybody who has dealt with him will testify to that fact. And so this is something, if he says he feels comfortable with it because it's his six-year plan, his vision for the future, then I feel very comfortable with it because I trust him in his word. Thank you.
The next reduction is a reduction of the world language supplies at J Mews since we are proposing to eliminate the world language experience at, at the school. Also with J Mews, we're just holding for another year on the round tables in the cafeteria. There's nothing wrong with the rectangular tables that are in the cafeteria structurally. It's just that, you know, research with respect to cafeteria seating, other seating shows that students engage with each other, connect better with round tables instead of being at quite a length and without sight of their peers. Lots and lots of school districts have been transitioning from the rectangular tables to the round tables. And we have been doing that at J Mews. We're just, we're going to take a, a break for a year because we think it's a, it's an area where we can realize a $7,000 savings for, for this particular upcoming fiscal year. At J Mews also, we're going to reduce the literacy, science, and social studies text. Some of this is related to wit and wisdom.
Yeah, this line was really supposed to cover, as you, as you get older, your ability to maybe read and understand more complex texts, especially in the science and social studies area, because the readability of those texts is, is often higher. What we were trying to do here was to build a library of texts that would go along with our new science and social studies units. And we would either defer that cost or find another way to offset the cost. We still want to make sure that we have reading material accessible to students in the units that we're working on, but we are looking into some free resources that would be available. But of, of course, we would look to supplement that in the years to come.
The next reduction is a classroom teacher. This was a newly proposed position at Thornton's Ferry. We can accommodate the need for this through an internal transfer. As I mentioned, between retirements and resignations, we are able to place some of the people who will be displaced out of the positions that we, are a result of our reductions. But this, here's a situation where someone will wind up in a classroom position and an excellent, excellent staff member at that. So, you know, we've tried to calculate this. We've worked very closely with the, with the principals, with all administrators to make sure that, we try to make the best fit possible for a particular school and for a particular grade level. The next reduction is consistent with what we've talked about. It's the gifted and talented at RFS and TFS, you know, Amy has mentioned the numbers. And so that is the reduction at those two buildings. The next four, you will see are the gifted and talented supplies. We had about $1,139 in all of the schools. We're going to reduce that because of our recommendation to reduce the, to eliminate the program. The tier one supplies, we are going to reduce, including the Deser and Wayfinder across the district. Amy, do you?
Yeah, I can speak to that. That is from the Student Services SEL budget. And you may remember from the budget committee, this was, we talked about this a long time. We talked about this for many nights. So the tier one supplies, what we were trying to do there was to bring in a social emotional assessment. We have done some piloting with that and we're going to put that on hold. And then the second was that the high school was piloting a new program called Wayfinder and it just aren't finding that it meets their needs. It's also expensive. It's about $16,000. So we're going to take a step back from that and look and see if there are other ways that we can meet the needs of high school students. And as I mentioned in previous meetings, our new director of school counseling is excellent and she's really looking at ways that maybe you don't need a particular program. Maybe we can use tools that students already have, whether it's their college board account and other things that may be available to them. And I could talk about the second one, the next one too. This next one, we did talk about yes a lot. I think if you all remember, we were yes and is it no and is it Y E S and, you know, so what we're talking about here, there are two cuts from this line. The first is the elimination. This year, we had a relationship with the Nashua Youth Council and we contracted with them to have a student assistance program counselor. This is a person that works out of the high school, school counseling office and looking to support students with substance misuse, you know, really some of the things that our school counselors can do, but they have other specialized training. Unfortunately, the Nashua Youth Council is closing their doors on June 30th and we've been made aware of that. And so we were looking for other ways to offer a student assistance program, maybe through Greater Nashua or another organization, but haven't found anything. So the elimination there of about $63,000 makes sense. And similarly, we took a really, you know, close look after the initial cut of one yes. I think you remember, we had three yes staff members. We cut one during that initial cut of a million dollars. And the second time around, we're looking to cut an additional yes staff member. And I know Bill's going to talk more about SEL support at a later time, but what we're really looking to preserve is the person that works primarily at the high school. And if you're familiar with Yes at All, they have a really specialized set of skills. They can do things like drive students to court, they can do drug testing, they can help with truancy, they can do things that it would not be appropriate for a, a school counselor or even a principal really to do. So that's why we're at least So that's why we're at least maintaining one yes person to do that very specialized intervention in collaboration with the district. So those two cuts together are the 123.
Yes.
So I have a question about yes. So if a student is court-appointed to yes, then the courts actually pay for yes. So these would be students that we're trying to prevent from becoming court-appointed.
And sometimes that person, you know, it's funny for them because sometimes the person is the same. They see them in court and then they see them and they're like, are you here for me? No, I actually work here. But they have other, you know, opportunities that they can work with students. But yes, if something is court-ordered, a court-ordered service, you know, we would be reimbursed for that. But we really try to help students stay out of the court system at all costs.
Right, thank you.
And just to explain to everyone, because I'm always acronym-challenged because there are too many in this profession. Yes is Y E E S and it stands for Youth Educational Employment Service. Just wanted to explain because somebody may be sitting there saying, is it yes, Y E S? Or, so that's what it is. All right. We have, in talking with Matt, you know, each year when we have staff turnover, we anticipate that there'll be some savings from some more veteran staff that are leaving and staff that would oftentimes come in at a lower salary level. They choose to come to Merrimack because they've heard good things about it. They have a friend or, you know, a neighbor or colleague who, in another school district, that has said great things about the district. But we're able to make some savings. We're also able to make some savings in terms of the procurement of certain commodities. Matt is a master of that, I don't mind telling you that. And so we feel confident that we're able to trim some monies out of the budget based on those anticipated personnel savings, but also procurement savings.
Yeah, I mean, historically, we've been running maybe three-quarters of a million dollars in personnel savings every single year due to savings and rehires. I don't think it's going to be as large this year as it was in past years. We usually churn over around 35 teachers and probably around 35 support staff members, although we're short right now 22, 25 power educators for the district. So that's going to contribute to this year's surplus. But with the passage of the new contract, hopefully we'll be able to fill those positions and take care of those roles as well as custodials, custodial services that we've been subcontracting out. We haven't hired a custodian in four years. You know, we've got probably 15, 20 openings for custodians and maintenance mechanics and grounds people, which everybody out there knows that we do. We're also looking at taking advantage of a program that the town, and I've been talking to Paul McCallie, Town Manager, about the net metering program. I've been, I've been talking to Bart Fromoth, Fromoth from, I forget the name of his energy company, but he's been in the legislature about a net metering program that we can get some money back on. And Bart's been only bothering me for two years, so I kind of have to give it to him on his persistence. And, you know, Paul's giving me the green light as far as this guy's the real deal and I don't have to sign a long-term contract. So every time I say no to Bart, Bart gives me a better deal. So I think I'll say no one more time and then I'll sign. And so the operating efficiencies will come from that. So we're fairly confident that's going to happen.
Then the next two cuts are mine. You know that these were new requests this year for some materials, which there were no lines. And in the last, the first round, we cut the first half of the materials and this is all of it. So we'll maybe look at other ways in the future years to be able to fund some of those things. And the second is the mentors. We tried to, you know, put some money to be able to pay stipends. We did retain some of them, most primarily for the teachers that are on site-based learning plans because the folks that are coming in that do not have a teacher license, they need significant support. So we've retained about $20,000. And that is estimating how many people right now we have on site-based learning plans. We may have more. And I think what Matt was talking about earlier, the hiring, one of the things that's happening right now is I think the teacher contract that the town supported and has enabled us to hire more qualified candidates. So we have fewer people applying for the job, but the people that apply are really good people and they're mostly from neighboring districts who I think now we're competitive with other schools. So we're getting people that it's not their first or second year of teaching. They've been teaching a while, which is fantastic for us as well as the students because they're getting a skilled, experienced teacher, but they cost more.
Our next proposed reduction, and keep in mind, as Matt said, the sum total of all of these exceeds the amount that we need to cut. But the next reduction is in band camp. Last year was the first year we resurrected band camp. Amy and I met with Bunny Serenita. Unfortunately Bunny had to move out of the area. And, but we have a new, excellent band director. And so for many years, you know, what Bunny told us is that, she was told, well, no, there's no money for band camp. There's no money for band camp, we can't do it. Well, we tried it last year and we said, you know, Amy and I met with her and said, you know what? It's just as important as athletics or any other area. So we're going to, we're going to have band camp again. Was very successful. But what we're going to have to do is if you select this as one of our reductions, we may have to explore charging a fee for that. It won't be a lot, I anticipate, but, you know, we're taking a look at it. If it is necessary that it's reduced, if that is your decision, we will look to fund that perhaps through a fee, on a fee basis.
So just to clarify, because there are actually two events in the district called Band Camp. Yes, so there's Band Camp, which is usually the week or two before school starts, which is when the band puts their halftime show together. This is not that, correct?
That's right.
Yes, so this is a summer, usually July, activity where it's supplemental to the band curriculum that takes place throughout the year. And as Bill just said, it's, it was something that used to exist and they brought it back last summer. And so that's what we're talking about today, not the marching band camp that happens in the fall.
Thank you, thank you for clarifying that. Because for about the last 40 years, I've just generically called it Band Camp.
It's okay, you're not the only one.
And I was just going to say, you know, hopefully like maybe we could do something like pay to play. And so if we wanted to do Band Camp, we could actually ask parents to, you know, help supplement Band Camp in the summer.
Because it is for younger students, right? It is for like, it's not for the high schools. Well, last year Bunny invited.
It was high schoolers were involved.
Oh, wow, okay. We had kids come up from the middle school. She did some single or small group lessons. She did ensembles, what do we call them, sections, like the brass people?
Chamber groups, like small, small ensembles.
Those, she ran all sorts of things. But, and I'm, you know, Brendan, I'm sure Mr. McWalter would have done the same.
Okay, so like many camps, if, like you said, we could explore the opportunity, like many camps of parents paying for, yeah.
There's quite a few districts that do a tuition-based camp like that, so.
All right, the next item is a contingency that we placed in the budget for. For next year, we specifically designated that contingency for any unanticipated enrollment increases. Looking at the enrollment on a month-by-month basis, it's looking like we won't need that money. Okay, and so we, we don't want to carry it, honestly, if we don't need it. So that's the reason for the, for the reduction. The last item on the list is we have chosen to eliminate the position of the Director of Social Emotional Learning and move that person into a S E L position at the upper elementary school. This individual is extraordinarily skilled. We talked about a few minutes ago, working with students who are presently in the gifted and talented program in terms of support. Can't think of a better person. And so that, the directorship will be eliminated. We've chosen, here's an area where we've chosen to take an administrative position and move it into a direct instructional position, which I think is important in some instances, in some areas throughout the school district. So we think it'll serve us exceptionally well. Will address some of the issues associated with gifted and talented students and all students. And so that is our list. As I indicated, along with Matt and Amy, total is about 2.2. We have actually about 1.985 to reduce.
Lori.
So first of all, I really want to thank everyone for coming tonight. We need your support and we need your voices. As we said earlier, during the budget session, the board did vote to cut a million dollars from the operating budget in good faith. We recognized the recent tax increases and we responded to our community. The voters of Merrimack did vote to move to a default budget. So we are left to ask our administrators to come up with cuts. And these cuts will have an impact on all of us. As you saw tonight, there's not one person on this board that has not been affected personally by these cuts. But I think it's like Chuck Moore just said earlier, it's time for us to reflect. It's time for us to work together. It's time for us to go back to the table and rebuild the 25, 26 budget. Some of these people will be staying in our school district so we can come back to the table and present a new and, you know, a new budget next year. And so I want to thank our administrators. I know for the last week, they've done nothing but look at data and come up with programs that they felt were going to have the least impact. And I want everyone to know that I'm going to fully support these cuts because I know the time and energy they put into it. And my last statement is, you know, success is not final, failure is not fatal. It's the courage to continue that counts. And I didn't write that, Winston Churchill did, but that's where we're at here tonight and that's what we're going to do. So that's my two cents.
All right, so we're going to move into a time of public comment and I'm going to ask two things of you besides your name and address. It is to keep your comments to three minutes and I'll give you a 30-second notification. And if you have questions, we're going to write those questions down and answer them all after the public comment has finished. And we're going to maintain our general practice of not having a dialogue, but receiving your questions. But we will be answering those questions after the 15 minutes of public comment. So with that, I open up the floor.
Rosemarie Rung, 21, Ministerial Drive. Thank you very much for the very thorough presentation. I have one comment and two questions. I'll start with the questions. One, of the current positions that are filled, that are being cut, are all of those staff members being absorbed in other positions? Or are there some people that it'll be a reduction in staff? And then my next question is, has the board received the insurance premium increase? I know that in the budget, it was, the maximum is budgeted, the maximum estimated. I was just wondering how much savings, if any, are from that. And then my third comment, I really, I really wish we could keep the band camp funded by the district. You know, music is such a big part of our culture and our, in our community and it comes from the schools. And even if there's, we can subsidize it in some way just to alleviate the burden on the families. Oh, and I have one other comment too. I really liked Amy's comments about expanding co-curricular activities to help give opportunities for children that, I hate to use the term gifted and talented, but they're very motivated in learning. And I was wondering if there could be some money that can be set aside to support the expansion of those co-curricular activities. Thank you.
Vertically challenged. Good evening, my name is Gina Groff. I'm at 29 Dahl. And first of all, I'd just like to say thank you, many of you, including Naomi. And the administration has spent way too many time, made too much time with me at the Budget Committee, where I'm proudly a member and I will be again next year. So I know how hard these cuts were. I know that you put a lot of thought into these. It's never easy to have to make these. As a member of the Budget Committee, I received several phone calls, messages from concerned parents, concerned teachers about how this would affect them personally and what cuts were going to be made if we were going to have another meeting. So I do appreciate and I know how hard you work, you know, crunching numbers and staying late. So I've been with you on some of those late night sessions and I know that you've had to do those multiple, multiple times besides ours, so thank you. The only, I had a couple of comments on here and, you know, I'm going to be selfish because I will have a child going to J M U S next year. And it's, it's really a big deal. You have three elementary schools all converging into one and that in and of itself is scary. So it's a small expense, but I think it would be a big impact. I'm asking you to reconsider putting back in the round tables at J M U S. I think that's very important. I very firmly believe in social and emotional. And I remember myself walking into a new school, a new class, and sometimes the scariest thing was walking into that lunchroom and figuring out where you were going to sit, if you were going to be at the end of the table all by yourself. So enabling a round table where everybody's included would be awesome if it could be considered. And also, this has been, you know, this has been on the plan for a long time. So they've been trying to roll this out for a long time. And I appreciate that the administration has given us options in more than just the 1.9 million. But I'm asking if you would consider, again, small expense, I think, big impact on these kids. And my last comment is, those co-curriculars are amazing. I hope we can expand them. It's, you know, like trying to get a Taylor Swift ticket sometimes to get into the lottery, to get into one of those sessions. And it's been great and, you know, to have that option available where it's funded by the school, I think, goes a long way. So excited to see where you can take that for reaching out to additional students and offering additional programs. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Timothy Bevis. I'd just like to propose a question. At the deliberative session in the packet for the school board, there were two to-be-determined teacher position cuts. I was just wondering if those were included in this list? And if they were not, if those have been decided yet? Thank you.
Yes, well, the first round, we cut one from the English department. That is a retirement and we couldn't talk about it at that time. And the second is in this round.
Hi, Heather Robitaille, 45, Springfield Circle. So thank you for all the work that went into this. I was there with some of you on those very late nights on the Budget Committee meetings. There are some items that the Budget Committee had voted to eliminate or reduce, like the contingency and looking at some of the technology budget. And I agree that if Jason is confident that that will fit in his six-year plan, that he will execute on that and be able to be successful. I had a comment that I'd just like to, that came to me for deliberative session. Good, bad, ugly, different, social media became a information place for people to go to, which was not always completely accurate. I'm thinking that maybe it would be very helpful to voters if at deliberative session, when we're talking about the budget and talking about default and what that means, being able to tell them, these are the types of programs or things that would be cut. And then as a voter, when you go to the booth, you know, okay, if I'm supporting default and I'm not supporting the school budget, I understand and am willing to, you know, sacrifice these certain services, programs, curriculum or staff. I know that involves extra work, but I think it would really allow voters to make a fully informed decision based on fact versus what they might find on social media. The one comment I just have regarding the gifted and talented program. So for public education, our mandate is that we serve the needs of all children. Special education, we also absolutely need, it's legally mandated. In New Hampshire, we don't legally mandate anything for gifted and talented or however you would like to identify those students. My concern is the impacts that we're having. If we have gifted and talented be reduced, which once again, it seems like there's no specific plan. specific plan yet on how we would implement it, although I do really think the co-curriculars and supporting students who have strengths in other areas is a great idea. These gifted and talented children, if they are not academically challenged during the school day, it will most likely manifest in behaviors that will detract from their education and their peers. And I, I like the idea of the additional support and enrichment in the class, but our teachers are stretched already. So if the board is considering the teachers to add something additional, I'd really encourage you to sit down with staff to find out, is that reasonable and feasible to ask them to do? Because we are going to have gifted and talented students and families that will leave our district and go elsewhere. And I know that we've talked about test scores being really important. We, we will lose those scores and I, I'm afraid this would have the opposite effect. We could retain that program and still meet our default. So my suggestion would be to keep that in as well as band camp so that we have equity between arts and sports, as it was mentioned. Thank you.
Hi, Caitlin Kelly Burnier, 2 Birch Street. I wanted to also speak to the gifted and talented cuts and how I know we've been having a decrease in our enrollment and that this will cause families that were considering staying within our school district to look at Academy of Science and Design or St. Chris or the Microsociety so that they can challenge their child. It also will lead to an increase in special ed referrals. My son is in the gifted and talented and he was started in the special ed program or referral because we weren't sure if he just needed something else or if, you know, what his, what he needed. So I absolutely agree with Heather that it will impact behaviors and things that are happening in our classrooms. And it will also impact the district test scores and the SAT scores, which I believe we have all of the high school students take. So I know that's something that people bring up a lot and I want to make sure that we are considering that. If we aren't putting all of the gifted and talented back into the budget, I think it would be necessary that we would have the, the upper elementary school texts for the literature, science and social studies, especially for those fourth grade kids that thought that they were going to go up to the upper and get their gifted and talented and were probably looking forward to that kind of program. And now they're not going to be able to have that to make sure that they are staying engaged because it is a change. And also, I would support growing our co-curriculars as well. Thank you.
Robbie Reisman, 8 Iris Drive. Again, do want to reiterate what a lot of folks have said, that I appreciate the work that went into this and tell by looking at it that, you know, a lot of thoughtful work was put into the process. So thank you for that. And like others, I did want to bring up the gifted and talented program. I've spoken on that one before, but I think, you know, folks have said a lot already, so I don't want to go into what people have already said. But a couple of things that came to mind to me were that I think sometimes there's a conflation between academic achievement and sort of the needs, the gifted and talented, which, again, that label may be outdated, so I'm not attached to the label, I don't want to get hung up on the label. But the, the needs of those kids that are identified in that program still remain. It's not necessarily, they're not always identified by their grades. That's why there, there might be testing in place. Sometimes these kids may excel in certain areas but struggle in other areas. They may be behind socially. There's sort of reasons why these programs were put into place back in the day. So I would request that there still be a way to identify these kids, much like the testing that is in place now does, and to try to meet those needs that may not be shown through their grades or whatnot. I don't want these kids to fall through the cracks because this process is, is ending as it is. And also, I would like to request that, you know, anything, any cuts that are made, regardless to the program, that maybe there be some open discussion in some of the future school board meetings about how the needs of the kids that, you know, are in those programs or would, would be going to those programs, like what will be done instead? I think that would be helpful. All right, thank you very much.
Not vertically challenged. Melanie Kern, 122 Jopper Road. I just have a couple of questions, kind of all over the map, I guess. Mr. Chevannelli, you talked a little bit about the unassigned fund balance. I know it's, we're not at the end of our fiscal year, so I understand that you can't give an accurate number necessarily of where we will land on June 30th, but I'm curious what currently our unassigned fund balance is. And also, probably to point it towards you, there was some mention about custodial positions not being filled and paraprofessional positions not being filled. And my understanding is that year after year, we have many of those positions that aren't filled. So my question would be, did we look at the historical data of how many of those positions were not filled year after year and did we consider cutting any of those positions when we looked at trying to, to gain some savings? I wanted to talk a little bit about the world language teachers being cut at J-Muse and just say that as a parent of a child in fifth grade at J-Muse currently, who's also attending the co-curricular of French Club with Madame, Mademoiselle Dunn, he asked me to come tonight. So I told Jayce I'd come and give a plug. He absolutely loves those experiences at J-Muse. I think that having the world language experiences, as Mr. Olson explained them, sets Merrimack apart. I think it sets us apart with towns like Bedford and like Derry upcoming that gives children experiences for different areas to explore prior to going to the middle school and having to make some solid decisions. That those experiences have been very beneficial for my older two children as well as my last one to come through. So I'd just like a plug for that. And then lastly, I'm also going to talk about the gifted and talented program. My youngest has been a part of the enrichment program at Reed's Ferry and at J-Muse. I think that the explanation under the gifted and talented is a little misleading when you talked about numbers and then when Amy talked about the numbers, we're really looking at 198 students, almost 200 students that this impacts. And Mr. Olson, you did say you were trying to not impact students as much as possible. That is a large number of students to impact. And I agree, I think that cutting that gifted and talented program, cutting those enrichment programs, does leave those students out in a world that they do not have the opportunity to meet with and learn from like peers. Those students are often spread out in classrooms and often don't have counterparts in those classrooms to challenge them. So even with the best of teachers which we have, even with the best PD that we can offer and even with the best differentiation and MTSS program that we can provide, you are removing the tier-two instruction from those kids by removing that program, just as you would be removing academic support from students who need it on the other end in a tier-two setting. I just think that saying we're going to cover it in co-curriculars is not reasonable for those kids. We talked about how our school counselors could pick up lunch group. Our school counselors and our SEL specialist, whom I'm also very familiar with because of my, my own children, are taxed with our students managing challenging behaviors, managing anxiety, managing mental illness. There is nowhere that I can see it's physically possible, given their current constraints, that they can take on a group of gifted and talented students.
I'm going to ask you to stop there.
Yep.
We gave you lots of extra time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lisa Allen. I live at 1 Fuller Mill Road. First, I do want to thank you all for what is a clear amount of effort put into this. I do not envy you. I would not want to be sitting where you're sitting, so I'll put that there. When this meeting started, we had probably a dozen more people here because of, for sports in particular, hockey, because there are rumors going everywhere that sports and hockey in particular were on the list. I see they're not on the list by the administration, which, thank you for recognizing the importance of those. But my concern is, is that the school board discussion and vote is together and no comments in between that. So I'm hoping to understand if you can overwrite what they've proposed and hockey might be coming up after when we have no public discussion. Is that something that can be answered? Because I don't understand the process.
We have.
I can answer.
Go ahead.
So I, I guess you're right. So at this discussion, this is the proposed by the administration and then the school board can choose to vote with those or have discussions to discuss other places where cuts could be made. So you're absolutely correct.
Okay. So we will not know the position of the board on sports until after public discussion? So could I have a few minutes then to talk about hockey? Because.
You have one minute.
One minute. Okay. Well, my one minute then is if hockey is on the list, if you don't know about our team and the program in general. It gives a ton back to this community and is not only a sport played by the kids, it, we've given thousands of dollars back to families and students who have struggled in this town through fundraising at their games. The kids, a lot of the kids, this is their drive for their academics. They only do their schoolwork so that they meet their grades. They have a lot of energy and they want to be out playing sports and not doing schoolwork. And I can say for myself, my son will sit down and do his homework because he wants the grade to make sure he can play. And I just want to make sure that everyone knows how important sports are, and hockey in particular, to our students. And I feel for all the people who are here, who are on this initial list, but I don't want that to be forgotten. That's it, thanks.
Hi, Jennifer Jobin, 42 Merrimack Meeting Drive. Wanted to talk on a couple of the topics. Mandarin, I'm really sad to see it go. It's a good differentiator for our students when they're applying to college. So I do wish it was promoted a little bit more or started earlier, but I am grateful my daughter is a sophomore in the program. I'm grateful that you are sunsetting it and not just completely cutting it right now so she can continue. And I'm grateful that you're retaining that teacher because she's excellent. So I'm glad about that. With band camp, I would hope that you would keep at least some of that money. My daughter last year had a great time doing band camp and it was really good for kids preparing for their all-state auditions. So I think that was really integral for them to have that one-on-one time and the small group time. And also speaking to gifted and talented, I hope you have the money in the budget and I hope you will keep that. It's already been pulled from the high school. That's my youngest child is a sophomore, but my three kids all really benefited from gifted and talented in the elementary schools. And I, I just hope you will reconsider that. Thank you.
Hi, Nicole Thomaselli, 11 Noah Drive in Merrimack. I just want to say that I'm so pleased with the way you've organized these cuts. This is an educator's worst nightmare. To have to cut 1.9 million dollars from a public school is heartbreaking. Having said that, I do agree, we have to be fiscally responsible. So I have a few different kind of branches of questioning. My first is, I would really like to have a discussion around zero-based budgeting moving forward so that the budget is built line by line with a lot of transparency, so it is not rolled over every year and we know exactly what is needed before the deliberative. And I selfishly, I need to do a better job attending budget meetings myself. But a zero-based budget is very taxing for your administrative team, but it is clean and transparent in terms of your, setting your priorities. I had another question around enrollment. I know that the surprise enrollment at Reed's, it becomes a financial burden and a last-minute hiring and locating kids in classrooms, it's, that's a problem. And I just wanted to ask about NESDAQ and if you're using NESDAQ projections. You do. Okay, I didn't hear NESDAQ mentioned in that solution. Okay, and they're not always accurate either and it is a guessing game.
They were accurate, they could predict the lottery and I wouldn't be sitting here right now.
I'm with you. I'm, I know. But I did want to say that with all of the additional housing in town, we cannot be surprised that these units have children in them. I don't care how high-end luxury they're, we're being told they are. There are kids living in these complexes and we need to be staffed for it. So whatever tools we need to get in place, if we have to talk to realtors, I would be more than happy to be involved in that, but I don't like August surprises. Okay. Gifted and talented, I know this is a very passionate and difficult position. I do think we have extraordinarily high-performing learners throughout our district. Having said that, I really do not like the verbiage gifted and talented because we see talent all over the place in our district and it's not measured in that third-grade universal screener. We have kids that are performing. I went to that cavalcade of bands. Our musicians are off the charts in this town. They're off the charts. They are incredible musicians. It's not going to show up in that third-grade screener. We have kids accessing Mandarin, which is a difficult decision, but I do think you have to look at numbers. That's not measured in a third-grade test. So I am all for you reallocating that money to build more robust systems, whether that be an MTSS, so we get win instruction that is very specific for smaller groups, or after-school programming, but reach more kids. Two to 3% is not going to get us over proficiency. We need to put our resources back into the base, build up our tier-one and get these kids proficient. I love after-school programming. We trust the teachers. We want our kids with them after school. So the more clubs and the better you can do it financially to make it financially feasible for families is wonderful.
I'm just going to take two more comments since they haven't commented. We're beyond our 15-minute comment time, so I'll take the last two.
I'll be quick. My name is Jennifer McCormick, 34 Kramer Hill Road. I have one statement and four questions. Here we go. I just want to say, I really appreciate the administration's thoughtful consideration. I'm encouraged by the work that you've done to try to bridge the gap between your proposed budget and this default budget. And I think that you've done a great job trying to minimize the impact to students and still provide an excellent educational experience for our students. Question number one, regarding the windows and taking them out of this year's budget, I'd just like to understand a little bit more about how those funds are available. Is it that the maintenance budget wasn't spent, that it was over-budgeted, or how were you able to find $200,000 for that out of this year's budget? Number two, let's see, oh, similar to the last speaker about the enrollment projections, what I heard during our Budget Committee meetings is that we were very confident about the growth of the student population and the enrollment projections. And this feels like a real 180 from that, so I want to understand what changed in sort of the, the 11th hour here to be able to reduce those two programs based on lower enrollments. Number three, I really appreciate that a lot of these changes are moving toward more directed instruction and eliminating what I would consider more overhead, whether it's moving an administrative position to a classroom instruction or moving a support position, like the technology support, to classroom instruction. I really appreciate that. And I wonder if there's, if you've looked at other opportunities to reduce the overall district administration from the number of folks that you currently have, because I know that that was a, a point that was made on social media that a lot of people wanted to know about. Number three, I'd like to understand a little bit more, if you can, talk about how you anticipate teachers would perform or teach differentiated levels within a classroom. A lot of what we're talking about is sort of taking, taking the gifted and talented program out, taking, you know, other types of supports out. I think that it can be done. I do think that we have really talented teachers who are skilled in those areas, but I don't know that that's necessarily something that the community knows. And so I'd like to hear about that. And my last question is around moving the Special Education Wellness Director to J-Muse. I recall in our Budget Committee meetings that you said that there was a. I recall in our budget committee meetings that you said that there was a, a need for a behavioral specialist in that school. And I'm wondering if this, this change or this move will help in that area. Thank you.
Hi, Marsha Brew, thirty-nine, Merrimack Drive. I just wanted to reiterate the fact about the sports not being on here. I appreciate all the hard work that you guys have done. Our family is newer to the Merrimack School District and one thing that drew us here is the sports program. So I do want to just reiterate the fact that it is an important piece. It's a great outlet for kids. It gives them a purpose and a sense of the community as well as all the other activities for the school. And I just wanted to say thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone who came and commented. I want to give everyone at this table five minutes to stand up. And because we're going to have a long discussion ahead. So we're going to take a five-minute break and we will come back to answer these questions and then have our discussion. I'm going to call our meeting back to order, so I will ask Board Member Lori Roth House to come back up to the table. Someone will let her know.
We don't get to see some of you all. I know. So you all need to come back around next time.
All right, so what we're going to do is we are going to fly through these questions and then we will get to our discussion on the board's decision on these individual cuts. So I will turn it over to Bill.
All right, and I, I may need some help in terms of the recollection of questions. I was writing them as quickly as I could. Representative Rung asked a question about what two positions we were not able to place. That involves a social studies teacher and it involves a Spanish teacher at JMU's. Okay, and regrettably, those are the two positions that we were not able to find other suitable positions for. Janie, you mentioned about the round tables. These are not only replacing the rectangular, but would be replacing existing, some aging round tables also. So we've actually heard from the administrator at the, at the school, at JMU's, that they can actually, they can really get through the next year, you know, without those tables if that's, you know, if that's a reduction that we still want to keep on the, on the table. I think Amy mentioned the TBD cuts that go back a ways. Heather, let's see.
Hold on, Rosmarie had another question.
The insurance.
Yeah. Or as I would say, the insurance.
The insurance.
Correct. The GMR, guarantee maximum rate increase, you know what that means, Rosmarie, because we've known one another for twenty-four years now. That was 15.9, the actual rate that we know after the deliberative session. Sometimes we catch a break and we know it before and we have made an adjustment on the floor for that. The actual was 15.9. So yeah, I was hoping, we didn't catch a break on that one, sorry.
One of the comments that Heather made was it would be helpful for voters to understand that if our proposed budget is not passed and we have the default budget, what would the reductions be? There are pros and cons to that. I've, I've experienced that in another school district that there was a superintendent in that sometimes if you propose those too early, given unknown conditions, you create a tremendous amount of anxiety very early in the, in the year to staff. Although there is the other side of that coin that says it is good for voters to understand what they're voting on and what the, what the implications are of a, of a failed budget vote. So that's something we need to discuss down the road because there, there are advantages to doing that and there are distinct disadvantages. Sometimes when staff here, early on, relatively early in the year, that, that positions may be reduced, they start looking around immediately and don't wait. And I've, I've seen that happen before also. Let's see, Kate spoke in favor of gifted and talented. Was there a question in there that, that I might have missed? Oh, excuse me. Kate had a comment in favor of gifted and talented, so did Robbie. Were there questions associated that, with that that we, you need any answer on? Okay. Melanie needed an explanation, a little bit more explanation on the unassigned fund balance. And Matt, if you want to handle that one?
Hold on, microphone. Yeah, at one point, it's, you know, it's, it's hard to actually peg it. But what I'm hoping to do, last year, when you get your tax bills, there was 6.2 million dollars returned to reduce your taxes. So I'm hoping to have at least that or you're going to feel it. And that wouldn't be a good thing because I don't want to increase your taxes because I don't have less of a fund balance to return to reduce those than I did this past year. And I'll know that in, well, I'll probably, I'll know it for certain that the, after I get my audit done and everything's booked correctly. We have audits. Everybody should know that we have audits. I got like six CPAs swarming at me in the summertime for like two weeks total. And we'll know what that is by then. But I'm hoping to at least bring in 6.2 so I don't have, we don't have to bump up the tax rate. I really want to hit that, hit that figure. Customarily, we've been, we, we spend around ninety-four percent of our budget and that kind of tracks with that, that 6.2. Years ago, when our budget was much less because of health insurance, because of wages, because of cost of electricity and fuel and a lot of things that we purchase as a school district, which doesn't really relate to any consumer price index because we don't buy goods and services. We buy people and benefits and health insurance and New Hampshire retirement and everything like that. That we always, we always kind of spend out our, our budget. And it used to be around three to four million dollars. And then it's COVID hit and then we hit a spike of like eight million because no one wanted to work. I mean, they were, people were just gone. And so now we've kind of feathered that down a little bit and we're going to try and continue to do so. But we still want to maintain a surplus or unassigned fund balance at the end of the year for a couple of reasons. And I'm not going to go on about this, but I'll go, make it short and sweet. When we go out for a bond issue, like when we bonded the middle school twenty years ago, one of the things that S and P and Moody's looks at is do we have the ability to pay our bills? And if we're running our household paycheck to paycheck or we're running our household in the red, that shows that we don't have the ability, in a case of emergency, to make the bond payments. And the penalties for missing a bond payment is enormous. So then our bond rating goes down. Even though we use the bond bank, we can be singled out because we don't have an adequate surplus to meet emergency needs if and when those happen. Case in point, JMU's, a bunch of years ago, had 600, 800,000 dollars worth of bats that we had to debat that school by tearing down the bricks, right? I see people squirming. I actually held one of those little things underneath the tarp that was going up. Why? Because I wanted to, Amy. And so, so, you know, it, it's stuff like that. So it's important to have a surplus to show the, the, the financial gurus out there that your financial, you have financial stability and you're able to meet your expectation. It's the same way a good budget would make a good household and make those in that household happy with one another and be able to live a good life, you know, so that's why.
So while you're on the hot seat, because I think you might be the best one to answer this, in that same line of questioning, why didn't we cancel any of the open wrecks for custodians, maintenance, paras?
Well, number one, if I, number one, that would be probably a union discussion because those are union positions. And if we stop, if we cut like twenty FTEs and say, that's it, we're not going to hire them, NEA New Hampshire is going to say, but you could in the future hire them. And if, when we pass the contract, all of a sudden people want those jobs again, then we've already removed them. And once we remove an FTE from an operating budget, we also remove them from the default budget so we can't get them back. So once they're gone, they're gone forever. And you have to reappropriate that money all over again and they're not in the default budget. So that's a danger zone.
And I can speak to the para question. Paras here in our district are all paid out of special education and they are dictated by need and service, the service grid on, for students. And so right now, we have had to contract to be able to provide that support and meet our obligation. So we keep those positions open because we hope that those paras come back to the district side because we really do want them to be part of our community. So if there was ever, you know, a student that aged out, maybe they've reached the age of 22 and they had a one-on-one assistant, you know, we, we, as, as Matt said, we could eliminate that one position, but there are often kids that are starting in preschool or coming to kindergarten so they get reassigned. So the, the para number, the para-professional number would be very, very tricky to cut. And Matt can speak more to the maintenance of effort because you have to maintain a certain amount that you're spending on special education from year to year.
Yeah, if there's, there's a grant call, IDEA. Federal government, back when Gerald Ford was president, passed this law. Special ed, they're supposed to provide, the federal government's supposed to provide 40%. They've never come close. We get a million dollars around for, for IDEA funding. And what we have to do is prove to the state that we are not taking federal money and supplanting our general fund expenditures. In other words, we're cutting it from the general fund. We're using the federal money to backfill. And so each year, they look to see, are you budgeting more than you did the year prior? If not, you have some explaining to do. Did you have a drastic drop in the number of special ed students? If you did, list them, not them, but list the positions by name that you have. And we have not had a drop in the number of special ed kids. In fact, I think it's grown every single year. So hence, to remove paras and everything like that is not, not, not a good position. So hence, to remove paras and everything like that is not, not, not a good position to be in. It would put us in peril of not meeting that maintenance of effort. And if we don't meet that, we lose around 985,000 dollars worth of money from the federal government. That helps us with our budget.
Your last question, I think for you, is the windows. Where do you find the 2K, 200K?
The windows, it's not necessarily a maintenance surplus, but it's a surplus in the bottom line. You remember I said 6.2? So we're going to overrun one of Tom's line in the maintenance budget. We're going to do the windows, we're going to show it where it belongs, but it's going to be spent off the bottom line.
Thank you.
Yep.
Bill?
Yeah. Melanie supported, you made some comments to support world language in gifted and talented. Lisa, you've spoken supporters, Lisa still has support of hockey. Jennifer, she's supported, you know, certainly supports Mandarin. Supports band activities in the summer and hopes we keep gifted and talented. Nicole, you had an interesting comment on zero-based budgeting. That is a subject that I'm, I'm familiar with. Forty, forty years ago, I was assistant superintendent for finance and administration in the Lowell Public Schools. And we happened to have, during that period of time, there was a greater amount of urban revitalization and urban renewal. We received millions and millions of dollars with the help of Senator Paul Songas at the time for rehabbing the old mill buildings. At that time also, we happened to have a, an employee from the Department of the Interior in Washington who was assigned to us. And he was an expert on zero-based budgeting. So I spent a year with, with him at the time that I was the assistant superintendent working on zero-based budgeting. A little bit complicated when you talk about the education, profession of education when it comes to zero-based budgeting. Its, its greatest degree of applicability is in the non-personnel areas. We have some discretion to, to look at priorities. When it comes to staffing, which is over 85% of our budget, in addition, you add on benefits, it comes to about 97, 96, 97% of our total budget. But staffing is dictated on enrollments that we have, on the courses that we offer, the subjects that we require to teach, expected to teach, the standards that the state puts forward. So there is some minimum level of scale, using an economics term, some minimum level of scale that we have to address in terms of staffing. So that we don't have a lot of discretion in terms of teachers. That is, you know, there are some people who feel that we could do without any administrators. That's not the case. You know, the old axiom, if everyone's in charge, no one's in charge. There needs to be some people in place to make decisions, to bring consistency to what we do in terms of curriculum, curriculum content, the way it's, the instructional practice is, it looks, pedagogical skills, but operations also, what we do across the district. So, always glad to talk with people about zero-based budgeting, because I have experience in it. Perhaps in the profit and loss private sector, it might be a little bit more applicable. But keeping in mind that oftentimes enrollments dictate a lot of, of what we do, okay? If I can answer, someone else had a question, and Nicole had a question on enrollments also. What we do is, we do use NESDEC, but Matt and I refine NESDEC's numbers. We use the actual October 1st enrollments for about seven years. We developed that seven-year cohort progression ratio average to try and refine the numbers. The, the interesting thing about demographics is one of the unknowns and the variables every year is the in-migration, out-migration factor. That can vary significantly. And so, we try to take a look at that. We, we are in touch with the planning department. I presented you about a year and a half ago, a, a report that outlined all of the residential developments by school district, so that we knew what was expected of those developments. What were apartments, what were condominiums, what were single-family homes of three and four bedrooms? Because those are the heavy hitters, such as up in Chestnut Hill, which is in the Master Cola District. Talked over the last several months with the director of planning in the town. And the development has, residential development, that is, has slowed down. Okay, so that's, that's a good thing. Because from my experience, when you take a look at the tax base and the tax levy, for every residential development that is built, for every dollar of contributed taxes to the revenue base in the town, a school district generally requires about a dollar 20 to a dollar 25 in servicing. So it's a losing proposition, okay, in terms of cost versus the contribution to the revenue stream through the tax levy. On the converse, when it comes to commercial industrial development, they are not as intensive in terms of requiring municipal services. So for every dollar that's contributed by a commercial industrial component of the tax base, that generally takes, and those, these figures may have changed somewhat, but it generally has taken about 80 to 85% of municipal services. So that contributes more to the tax base than to the cost of providing supportive services. So that's the importance of keeping an eye on residential development and enrollments, because it's, it's not only a, a capacity issue with our schools, which we are studying right now, and we'll be giving you a report on, hopefully by the end of this school year, in terms of capacity, grade level configuration. But it's, it's, no pun intended, it's very taxing in terms of taxpayers to be able to pay for services with increasing residential development. That's why we also, Matt and I have requested that we be included in, on the review, because every, every municipality does this, or should do it. We are included in the review of any newly proposed residential project from the get-go. Okay, from the conceptual plans to the presentation before Planning Board, Board of Appeals, et cetera. We need to know what the potential is for the number of units, the nature of the units, and the location of those units. And I, I don't mean to bore you to death with residential development, commercial development, impact on, on the capacity, impact on expenses. But that's the reality that we deal with in this profession, okay? So, I didn't mean to belabor the point, but I think it's sometimes helpful to explain what we look at and how we, how we look at it. So that's, you know, and I'll be glad to talk with you more about zero-based budgeting if, if, if you'd like to. That's the who, what, when, when, why behind enrollment projections. You also support the gifted and talented. I hope I didn't miss anything else on that. Jen, you talked about the, the windows, where's the money coming from? Enrollment, enrollment projections also. How do we do staff differentiation? That's, that's accomplished mostly through professional development and collaboration between the staff. You know, for years and years and years in this profession, we've talked about the need for differentiated instruction. Some people do it very well. Some people need PD and discussion with, and collaboration with, with colleagues. But it, it can happen.
I, I would just want to say, and I know I'm looking at a lot of educators, not just up here, but in the room. You know, it is differentiation and meeting the needs of the students that are in front of you is something that teachers do on a routine basis. It's not just for gifted and talented, but we also have students that have special education needs, perhaps have, you know, comorbidity conditions or they present with other medical conditions in the classroom. So this is not a new concept for the teachers here. It is something that we take very seriously. Of course, if we have a particular pocket or a particular population of students, such as English language learners or students with attention deficit disorder, we try to provide very targeted professional development. But the differentiation based on ability and achievement is something that teachers routinely do and build into their planning and preparation. So while I'm always on the lookout for very high-quality PD, I don't think this is going to be something new, you know, that, that teachers would have to do.
And I want to add to that. I do that every day in my classrooms as well. Math, comparative religions, economics. I have students all across ability levels. And so I do it every day. It comes in different forms, like how many math problems they're doing, enrichment activities, additional things to engage them. And it, once you know how to do it, you just do it. And, and I know here in Merrimack, we do provide PD for that and coaching and mentoring and, and teams working together. So it, it's a regular thing that goes on. I do want to say this, if you are a parent and you think your child needs additional enrichment, please speak to your teacher. They would be happy to partner with you in challenging your student even further. So make sure you're connecting on your concerns regarding that in your child's classroom, if you feel like there's more that they could engage with in the curriculum and in their classroom.
And I think the last person who spoke, I think Marsha, supported sports. Marsha, I'm not sure if you're here. If I've missed something, I apologize. Honestly, sometimes I can't read my own scribbling and I was writing quickly. So if there's something I missed, we'll answer it.
I think Jen had one more question, Jen, about the social emotional learning specialist position at Muse that was retained through both sets of cuts. And our director of student wellness has accepted that role. And so, the additional behavior support will be fulfilled at JMU's. We are going to need her by RSA. We do have to have someone who oversees guidance. They call it a director of school counseling. When you have a certain number of counselors, you have to have a director. We have one of those at the high school. We do not have a district director. That's what that position was also supposed to be. So I will be working with Sarah, who you saw last week. She came and spoke to you about the suicide prevention policy. She's fantastic. But we will have to retain some director of school counseling K to eight requirements that we have to do to be in compliance with regulations.
All right, so, for the board, it's time for us to have our discussion. So the way I want to go through this is, let's just start at the top. And if, just line by line, if there's something you want to bring up, just raise your hand and tell us what line item you are looking at. Naomi?
I actually, I have some general comments first. My, my experience going through this process, both with these reductions and the ones we talked about months ago, before the deliberative session and the vote, is that everything hits everyone differently. Everyone, everything we do is valuable to someone, even if it's a program that only has two people in it. And so I want people to know that, that I'm honoring that and that this is not easy. And that even the, even the things that don't affect, like that aren't directly associated with a person, like this was an example I just pulled out of a hat, like if, if we decide to reduce the budget for copy paper, that might affect, you know, a teacher who has to figure out a new way to do a lesson and that takes some of their, their mental energy away from students. And so even the things that don't seem like they affect students probably also affect students. It's, it's an organic whole, this, this thing that we're, we're discussing. And while we're deliberating and while I'm, I'm thinking about what I value and what the community values and what administration has proposed, I wanted to just draw attention to the fact that we all come into this with our own biases and our own things that are near and dear to our hearts. And that I appreciate our administration for their years of experience. I think sitting at the, at the table over there, we've got more than 80 years of combined experience in all aspects of running schools. And they really do, they have the big picture. And they're going to be the ones who are most capable of setting the emotion aside to an extent and saying, okay, this, this all kind of sucks, but here's the way we can make it suck the least.
All right, so.
But I'm the youngest of the group.
We know, Bill, we know.
Yeah, actually, it's the one in the middle, yeah.
All right, so I'll just, windows, preschool teacher, MES classroom teacher, social studies, science, library assistant, any of those. Okay, Mandarin?
So, I would like to speak about Mandarin, and Arabic, actually. But the first thing I want to say is, I hear a lot of, well, they just cut the things that don't affect them. Not true. Because I have a student in Mandarin. While I'm talking about students, I have a student at JMU's who also is affected by language cuts and other cuts. So, that isn't true, right? Here's, here's my concern about Mandarin. I have to take my own personal thoughts about my own personal situation aside, because it doesn't actually affect my child, because my child will be sunsetted. So that's great. But, few things, I'm thinking about Mandarin and Arabic. I, I did a quick search of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine surrounding districts. And of the nine surrounding districts, only one, two, offer the basic French, Spanish, Latin. In one case, it's just French, Spanish, German. Amherst is French and Spanish. The rest of them all offer at least four languages, French, Spanish, American Sign Language, French, Spanish, German. We've got Latin, some with American Sign Language. We've got a random Russian thrown in here somewhere. Where is that? So my, my, my thought on this, and I, you know, there's no hill I'm dying on, right, at this moment? But to, to reduce it by two languages and offer only the basic three, French, Spanish, Latin, I don't love that idea. I know Arabic has had far less enrollment. If we were going to keep one over the other, looking here, Mandarin's more expensive, but it's had more, it's had more participation. And speaking to it, I also think that, I just lost my train of thought completely. Oh, that as we're cutting options for students, right? So as we're talking about gifted and talented, I, you know, I'm, I'm only going to speak my, my own experience, because that's what I know. My particular child, not coded as gifted and talented, but when they were looking for a challenge, that was the challenge they chose, right? So we talk about challenge by choice. And, and we talk about how students sometimes, you know, that is the challenge that they choose. So when we're cutting gifted and talented at the high school level and saying, we provide a robust program of studies, French and Spanish and Latin are hard for a lot of kids, but they're also easy for kids that learn languages. And having one challenging language in that department at least is something that I think is meaningful. You know, I may never have another student that will ever want to take a language, but that would be one point I wanted to bring up about Mandarin. When, I'm waiting to hear what the rest of my board colleagues think about the whole picture before I decide which hill I'm standing on, but that is what I want to say about Mandarin.
May I comment on that if I, if I could for one second? About, about 18 years ago, I started Mandarin in a, in a school district in which I worked at the time. It just never gained traction. And I, I don't know why, because if you look at, you know, the epicenter of global international commerce is China. And it's an extraordinary economic engine. And I thought at the time that it would, it would take off and soar. But what we're seeing here is what I saw back in my other district, for whatever reason, whether it's the complexity of the language or that the younger generation just, just doesn't see the, the relevance of it, which we certainly know is, is relevant, but it just hasn't gained traction. So I just wonder, this is not the only district that that has, has happened in.
Naomi?
This is a question I probably should have asked it when we were asking questions. But I'm curious if you have historical information on Mandarin and Arabic in Merrimack. When did the programs start? What was the intention behind starting them? How, how has that panned out? Like, did we set goals for them? Are they meeting those goals? Did, what was the initial enrollment? How has it trended? All that kind of stuff.
Honestly, I, I don't have any more information other than a couple of years. Matt, I don't know whether you would have those numbers?
I remember, I forget how many years ago it was. The trustee of trust funds approached the Merrimack School District and they funded the first year of the Mandarin program with a gift of $50,000 back in the day. At that point in time, Ken Johnson was the principal of the high school and Ken initiated a Chinese exchange program. So they would actually come over here and we would send a group of students and So they would actually come over here and we would send a group of students and teachers and everything like that over to China. The Great Wall, all the good stuff, big, you know, it was, it was a big deal. Then as years went on, that there was, then there was a lot of interest in the program because of the Chinese exchange program. The two of them kind of went hand in hand. And then as years went on and certain political things started to happen, the Chinese exchange program where we would visit them and they were allowed to visit us, kind of went by the by. And when that happened, the program slowly kind of went into a less of an interest and a less, lesser enrollment. So it's been a soft decline. But it did peak with that Chinese exchange program. The two of them together were real powerful. Once that left and was broken and we never heard with the, heard from the, the Chinese-American school that was there, that was our sponsor and we were their sponsor. That's why the Terracotta Warriors in the front of the high school, okay? So that was a long time ago. If anybody ever wonders, what the heck is that doing there? That's why it's there. And it was a slow decline ever since, so. Arabic? I am not sure about how that was first brought up or who brought it up at the time. I can't say for certainty. Maybe, I don't know.
Okay. Can you use the microphone, please?
Yeah. You look familiar, so go.
I was a teacher at the high school when Arabic started. We had a, a teacher who came to teach social studies who knew Arabic and that, that was kind of his background. And he offered to teach a section of it, I think, just maybe during his planning period even. I don't, I don't remember exactly. But there were enough kids interested that then it, they started offering more sections of it.
Yeah.
But it, it sort of just was a kind of an organic start that way.
That, that, that's kind of consistent with my recollection.
And it's the same teacher that, that is there now.
Oh, yeah, Mohammed, he's been here forever. Yeah, I know, yeah.
Just want to say one last thing as I wrap up my comments on Mandarin. I understand that there's, you know, lower enrollment. We will have eight kids in Mandarin for next year, but I think that's not uncommon with AP classes. Looking at the enrollment for some of these AP classes, they have 10 or less students in them, right? Because, you know, they don't all, but some of them do. So we do run advanced classes for students in other subjects with not a lot of enrollment. I, I totally understand. And again, not sure this is the hill I'll decide to die on tonight, but I just wanted to just mention, say my thoughts.
Ken?
And when I first moved to Merrimack and saw that we offered Mandarin and Arabic, I thought that's just such, it's a cool thing. It's a really unique thing that Merrimack has. And when it came up, I can't say I was totally surprised when I saw it on the list because again, looking, it's, it's a number and you have to look at numbers when you're making discussions like this. I come back to, these teachers aren't going anywhere. We have them, they're in the district, they can still teach these things. We still have ELO opportunities, we have enrichment opportunities. And if the, the need comes back, if all of a sudden there's a cry for, we want these classes back, this is a discussion we can have down the road. So while I, I, I do, you know, we're looking at these numbers right now, I don't necessarily see these as going away necessarily. So that's what I, I keep coming back to is that it's a see you later, not a goodbye kind of thing.
And in the, in the case of Arabic in particular, if it was originally started because the, the gentleman who teaches it was really excited about it and like wanted to do it as an extra thing, I, it stands to reason that he would be up for that again potentially, so.
All right, let's move on. After that, we have the math coordinator, the sped teacher, digital learning specialist. Any comments on those? All right, world language teacher. Let me talk to this one. This one hurts. Jenna and I specifically talked about at the deliberative session wanting to see that turn into a more robust experience and being more than just one or two languages. But when we've looked at the contact hours that go along with that and given that while it's a feather in the cap of Merrimack, it's really not typical of the schools in Merrimack. I mean, in, in New Hampshire, that's what gives me pause when we're facing this. And it's not to say, like Ken said, that we can't still develop a program. See, we were talking about developing it for next year. It doesn't mean that we can't take the time and relook at it. But, and, and this is a very unpopular thing to say, and I know that. But the reason why charter and private schools can offer these things starting in kindergarten is because they have a longer school day. Having a longer school day allows more opportunities. My kids went to a charter school in Colorado. They had immersive Spanish or French from kindergarten through 12th grade. But they went to school from eight to 3:30, K through 12. So when we look at the length of our school day, the number of contact hours we can have, the amount of instruction we need in ELA, math, science, social studies, and our unified arts, I can see why we're really struggling with budget and time on this issue. But it hurts because this is not the cut we wanted to make. We really wanted to see a bigger, broader program here.
I'm, I'm trying to pull together my thoughts. I had the same, I have the same questions about all the things that are kind of longstanding Merrimack things that, that were kind of similar to, I asked with language, does anyone know when this was conceived and what its intent was? I, like, I have guesses in, in my interpretation of it, but I'm, I'm curious if we have any background.
I'm, I'm sorry that I, that I, I don't have the background on that. I don't know if Matt does or anyone else.
My interpretation, then I'll just roll with that, is that it's kind of to give kids a taste of what we offer at the middle school. And knowing, having had this taste, originally when it was both French and Spanish made sense because that's the two languages that are offered at the middle school. And so then they could make an informed decision because the language courses at the middle school are optional. I am wondering what we can do creatively to provide that same opportunity for kids at J Muse who are going into middle school at a lower cost. Can we do something with a stipend where there's something really short, where someone comes in and does a quick game and activity to get kids excited about, about their language options at the middle school? Is that something that, that we can consider?
So what I would say is that, you know, right now, the administration has spent all this time coming up with cuts and now we're asking them to come up with what's the next plan. And they barely got to the cut, so they don't have time to come with the plan. But I think that's a job that we need to do when we look forward because, you know, when we look at the amount of contact hours, that's what we were talking about. So how can we be creative? Well, one of the ways that we could be creative that we, we just cut band camp maybe, but you know, having a world language summer enrichment program. Then we're not pulling them out of classes, but they're getting, I mean, I think, I forgot how many days they actually got, like 19 days.
Thirty-six days.
Thirty-six, total, over two years. So if they did 36, but you know, so if we, if we did two weeks of, you know, you know, French in the, in the summer or two weeks of, you know, Spanish in the summer and kids could go to world language camp, these are things that we could do, we could pay, it would be a lot less money and we would, we would still be okay. But I think that's the stuff that we have to come up with. That's our job.
Yes, and I agree with you. And, and I was thinking, add to that, that would be something for us to talk about at our goals meeting in a couple of months. I was thinking something more along the lines of, like, at the end of sixth grade, having just been through this at J Muse, there's a lot of like informational events happening for parents and for students. And like, just something like really short and sweet to try and just, you know, address that. That wouldn't, this year, obviously, kids had both, but for next year, something to think about.
I can speak a little bit too. After the initial cut of French, talking with Principal Bozeman and Assistant Principal Hoppa, we know that there is now, there wasn't a need to provide some type of exploration with French because it wasn't going to be offered at Muse. So after these, we've had a lot of hard conversations, I feel like, over this budget, this budget cycle, we are talking about how we can offer students in seventh grade an exploratory opportunity with both French and Spanish. As you know, we expect students to declare, you know, what language they want to take in seventh grade. And the other thing that we're looking at is, you know, how can we develop credit bearing courses at the middle school, which is consistent with what other high schools do? So that would be French one, Spanish one, and algebra one, so, which are not going away. So, and those are similar curriculums and assessments that are already happening. So those things are in the works right now because of the cut, cut that already happened.
Perfect. That's, that's kind of what I was, was getting at. So to hear that you're already thinking about it and already working on it and have a plan for how it should go. And I think like the beginning of sixth grade versus, beginning of seventh grade versus the end of sixth grade, that's not a huge deal. So awesome. Thank you.
So with that, let's shift to gifted and talented. This is another one where I'm really, really struggling. I went, my dad was in the air force. We moved to New Mexico over a couple of years. I was in the gifted and talented program down there. And it was project based, which was wonderful. And I really, really believe that we need to ensure that all of our students who are high academic achievers, whether they're in the 98th percentile or not, regardless, that they get challenged in the classroom, activities, enrichment, and things like that. So I want to make one comment and then I have a question for Amy. We have, we talked, Amy talked about the, the potential of expanding co-curriculars. And I know there was a parent, and I, I've changed my page numbers now, but that asked about, well, how can, how, how can that be done or, or everything? We have four months to figure that out. We don't have to figure out co-curriculars tonight to figure out how we are going to expand the high school program, expand the middle school program, expand what we're doing at the elementary for the gifted and talented students and other students. That being said, my question for you, Amy, was related to, you had mentioned the enrichment possibility still continuing during that WIN block. Could you expound on that a little bit?
You know, I, I, we have not had any conversation about it. So I appreciated Board Member Rothaus' earlier conversation. We have spent the last, you know, probably week, you know, in this and, you know, really talking about it. So I'm just talking very generally right now. I don't want anyone to think that any, there's anything, you know, discussed or in, or that has been solidified. But during WIN is when students are grouped for their particular needs. Right now, that is when gifted and talented services are provided and that those are provided by those teachers. But there are other service providers available during that time. So I think within that structure, yes, you'll have students that are going to Title I because as part of that supplanting versus supplement, you can't take students out of core instruction. Special ed services happen then. Maybe a student is getting speech or OT. So there are times in the day where students are not taken out of core instruction and we could provide them with opportunities for enrichment. I, I do want to circle back to what Melanie, right, was saying. I was not trying to be misleading at all about the numbers. The enrichment numbers, by definition, we try to pull as many kids as possible into those groups. We try to because the gifted and talented population is so small and those kids are guaranteed those services for the whole school year, those three, those, those 90 minutes. With enrichment, they might get, be part of a trimester or a three-week rotation or a four-week rotation, but we try to involve as many kids as possible. And I did not want to downplay the number of kids that are touched by enrichment at all. I was just, those kids do not meet the gifted and talented criteria, but we try to include as many kids as we can. So the way I would imagine that happening is when building PLTs or building leadership, talk about WIN time, is that we will then also talk about an enrichment block and who might be available to do that. Just again, talking and thinking about ways that that has been done already. If you're a Reed's Ferry or a Thornton's Ferry parent, they have done some of that with the Unified Arts already where they have a, a, a period of time, I think it's on Fridays, where all of the Unified Arts teachers offer a different exploratory, say photography or foods or, you know, they're offering different things to all students and students get to pick. I can imagine that it would look similar to that, but during the WIN block.
Anybody else? Naomi?
This is the one that I'm struggling with the most. The reason I'm struggling with this one the most is, interestingly enough, it's similar to some conversations I had with folks on the budget committee when I was the liaison to there and, and they're maybe going to laugh because I'm taking their position for this particular one, where this is the one where I'm the most nervous about the lack of a solid plan. This is the one where I hear what you're saying about how what we have now isn't necessarily perfect and it is possibly outdated and definitely needs a revamp. And this is the one where I'm most concerned that if we drop it now, we won't come back with something specific. And I, I, believe me, I, I absolutely trust you and I know that, that you guys are always intending to do the right things for students, but it's just this one, this one feels like we don't do, we, 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 we could do so much more for our high achieving students and, and to take away like this one thing feels like too much. I don't know if it's going to be my hill either, Jenna, but that's, that's where I'm feeling.
And I'll just, I, I feel very similarly to Naomi and I say this with a son who was receiving enrichment services. So I know what it's done for him and I feel the same way. I, I don't know what the answer is. I, I have nothing but trust in our administrative staff for the plans they come up with and thinking ahead, but I know how, you know, there's a lot to fix and there's a lot to work on. And so I, I think, I fear that this will get left by the wayside. And we, you know, it's, it's one thing to talk about gifted and talented at the high school where we offer so many different opportunities for those kids who really need that extra push. There just aren't that many opportunities at the younger level. So it's, it, that was one that when I saw that, it was a concerning one for me. So I'm, I'm right there with you. Naomi?
Jenna?
So I think I share the concerns as well. Again, I'll echo it, well, they both said, but Ken said very articulately that, you know, it's not anything about the trust I feel in teachers or the administration on cutting this. I just know that, you know, contracted services, I know this isn't special ed, but services that have, you know, there, there's been testing and then there's been identification and then there's been a, a specific timeframe with someone dedicated to doing it. That is far more reliable than, you know, how do we measure what teacher is doing the best with differentiation or whatever. At the same time, I really appreciate what Nicole said when she came up. In, in working in the MTSS process, now I, I work in the, MTSS is multi-tiered systems of support. So the bottom tier is tier one, everybody in the school gets it. Tier two, you know, those are the kids that need the support. And then tier three is the top of the triangle, the smallest number that need the highest amount of intervention. We can talk about that with behavior, but we can talk about it with academics as well. And that becomes informed by data. And the, the direction I'm hoping that we would go is that there would be the, and, and I honestly don't know, are there MTSS teams for academics already in our buildings?
Yes.
And so are they looking at the data? Because I think one of the things in talking to people that I know about this is that, you know, we're capturing such a small fraction of kids who could be considered, and we can all agree that we hate this term, gifted and talented, because we're, it's really just who performs great on a test, right? But you've got so many kids that, you know, you've got the highly relational kid who can stand up and give a speech and, you know, go, go up on stage and do anything and is really like, but that person might not test well, so they're not getting there. So I'm wondering if, it's so hard because you don't want to, to cut the program you know provides a consistent service. But at the same time, if we can switch to a new model where we're using data like iReady and we're using data like, you know, because iReady provides us with reading and math and it, and it's given two times a year, that we can provide a program that's actually more effective, more inclusive and more flexible, to use language giving to me by a wonderful person I talked to today. I think that we could include more kids and actually, that's, that's where my mind goes with this. Like I, I could see this being a cut that could be detrimental to kids, but I actually think it could be a cut that ends up being beneficial to not just those kids, but to more students resulting in more opportunity if we are making an intentional focus to use those MTSS teams to identify more students who can be involved in opportunities, who will deliver those services and Who will deliver those services and how that will work, I don't know. So again, like I see, this is a tough one because I actually see pivoting from an outdated model to something that's more best practice currently. I, I see that as a benefit. So it's hard, I'm, I'm having a hard time.
May I just, oh, I'm sorry.
What I was going to say, and, and Bill, maybe, I don't know if you were going to address this or not, is actually, I agree with you completely, Jenna. I think that's what we need to do. I think, I think we need to, to do something like that. I would like to not see us pause the services we're giving to the kids now while we come up with that. And that feels, the administrators can correct me, but that feels like something that needs a longer plan. That feels like something that needs to be more intentionally done and rolled out. And so I'm leaning towards keeping what we have now, directing the administration to come up with something different and, and more inclusive and everything that you just said for the following year. That's kind of where my head is at with that.
Bill, before you speak, can I say one thing?
Absolutely.
Going back to what Naomi and what Ken really said. Ken, you, you mentioned your concern was that this might be something that goes not, that would be a failure of us. It's our responsibility to ensure that a new program comes in, that we, we write the policy and charge administration and we oversee that they did it. If that happened, it would be our fault, more, not admin's fault. I'm going to let Lori speak and then I'll give it to you.
The only hours, I, I was going to say, I, I agree. I, I really liked what Nicole said earlier about, you know, being more inclusive and there's so much talent and we're measuring talent on, you know, like a test score. I, I get that, but I'm going to say what Ken said. We're going to have our hands full with all the things that we have to do, all the goals meetings that we have to do. And so to take something that is a system that may not be working perfectly and completely saying, we're not going to do it. I, I, I have a little reservation too. And, and so I don't know, I don't know how that's going to look, but, but, and, and I, I'm not going to ask you how it's going to look because I, I know we don't have that answer, but I, I do feel that.
The only comment I was going to make is, is if, if this winds up being cut, we, we've had discussions, we're actually looking towards it from a very interesting perspective of trying to be as creative as possible to expand the opportunities for, for more children, knowing that there's a lot of great thought in the leadership team and how can we make it a better experience, not only for the gifted and talented students, but for other students also in the district. So we, we're not shying away from that. We're looking at it as, as quite honestly, an opportunity to improve upon something that we're doing right now.
Jenna?
So just in summary, I'm hearing five reservations, but five resounding, let's get creative about this. So maybe, maybe this is our keep and commit to reforming, just my thoughts.
That we trust you.
Possibly. All right, let's move on to the next, the next round. This is going to be the computer replacement, iPad replacement, classroom peripherals. Are we all good on pushing those forward? The world language supplies goes to the world language, round tables. Anybody want to say anything about the round tables?
I mean, if we've got money to play with, I see no reason why we can't keep the round tables if we have money to play with. If it's a drop in the bucket and looking at all these numbers on this sheet, I would, I would be in support of keeping that in with the wiggle room that we have.
Speaking as someone who's been on the Budget Committee for a couple of years, these round tables surprisingly bring up a lot of discussion. Two, two years ago, these round tables were also on the chopping block. And there was a lot of, of like, I, I don't remember the specific numbers of, of years of plans, but there was like a 10-year plan, had become a 20-year plan, had become a 30-year plan. And that, that's, don't quote me on those numbers. Those aren't exactly the right ones.
That's SAU building numbers.
But, so yeah, I, I, like Ken said, it depends on what we end up deciding to keep if we have money to play with. I'm, I'm completely fine with keeping them there. If we're looking for something to, like if we need to make the numbers work, we need to make the numbers work. So we'll see what happens.
All right, JMU's texts.
I feel like, I feel about JMU's texts the way they feel about the tables. I feel like texts are important and we're, I don't want to cut texts especially. This is maybe also goes with gifted and talented, right? Like I don't want to be cutting things that might be resources that might help some of those kids have more advanced options. That would be one that I'd like to hold on to if we can squeeze it. I know it's more expensive than the tables though, so.
Lori?
What I was just going to say about the text is, if the administration thinks that we could hold for a year just being in administrative position, sometimes those texts, the new texts are not that much different than the old text and you can actually add the newer parts into the text, you know. So I'm okay with the cuts on the text, but I understand why Jenna would think that we would want to keep.
And, and I would just say, as a person who's had a lot of those conversations, I'm actually okay with that cut because we're bringing in wit and wisdom and all of those core texts. And I think it'll give us a year to really look at what are the interests of students? What are the, what's, what, what is needed? And then the interim would be able to access some free, some free texts.
So this is extra beyond what we would need to start off with wit and wisdom. Oh, okay. That makes me feel better, actually.
And it really is targeted at science and social studies units that as part of our curriculum realignment, we now are doing different units, say in sixth grade. Sixth grade used to do the states. It was sort of not a, it wasn't aligned to the national standards. So we've shifted to be do, to be doing Egypt, Mesopotamia, or, you know, ancient civilization, if, if you think about that. So they didn't have a lot of information or texts about that. But I, I do feel like a year would be okay.
Well, if you're comfortable, I'm comfortable.
All right, moving on to the TFS classroom teacher, Tier One supplies and SEL intervention salaries. Any comments on those three?
I just want to ask about the YES worker. So that, I, I'm just thinking about this from the position of my district. I don't think we have this or we might, it doesn't impact like our building. But for example, we have, I think like a, a family liaison. I don't even know what they call the person. But we have a student who won't, I'm just trying to understand what this position is. If we have a student that won't say, get out of bed and get on the bus and won't come to school, but is in danger of being truant. This person goes to the house to assist the parent with getting the student to school, which I know a lot of, might elicit eye rolls from people, but is remarkably necessary in many situations. So is that what we're talking about? I don't know. I know that's not the only part of this person's job.
Yeah, that person does a lot of things. That is one. I mean, of, of the tests, I know that Principal Claire was here earlier and he can speak to it more. It really is on a case by case basis. The YES worker does have, if for lack of a better phrase, a caseload. Students that are referred to him go through a process and they look through our other tiered system. So they would perhaps start with their school counselor or work with another trusted adult in the building. It might be an administrator. It might be their special ed teacher, you know. So you're talking about lots of people that would have contact with that student. But outside of, you know, we would not recommend teachers put students in their car. That would not be safe for the student, for the family, for the staff member. So these folks have very specialized training. And when Bill talked about the, the name of YES, they also can do some work-related support. So if a student is maybe looking at the HISAAT or they're graduating from our Adult Education Program, just thinking about real students that are going through this right now. They're getting ready, they're going to do the 20 credit diploma, they're going to graduate from our adult ed. They need some help on their job skills. That person, you know, can also help with that. Does a lot of work around substance misuse as well.
My question just is, is one, because we've reduced now from three to one, is one going to be enough? Or is there going to be a huge population of highly at-risk students that we will be failing if we cut this?
Perhaps, but I, is it okay for me to talk?
Yeah, I'm just going to say also, one of the, one of the things that we're looking to do is looking to shift funds for three individuals we employ on contract services to positions within our budget that would address some of these issues. You know, a social worker. You know, it's interesting because this is not the only school district that is experiencing issues with the challenges of getting kids to come to school. It's extraordinary to see and think about and understand the impact that the pandemic has had on families and the ability. One of my former colleagues in Massachusetts is now the Secretary of Education. He is doing a public service announcement because of the extraordinary increase in absenteeism, in tardiness, in reluctance of, particularly children in middle and up, and, excuse me, high school age, children who come to school. It's like someone has flipped the switch. And I'm sorry, Amy, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
I just wanted to add, he was talking about the three positions coming over, but also the addition of the, so the, the position that we cut that person is primarily at the upper elementary and the middle school. And when we really looked at what are the services that that person is providing, they are valuable, but we do feel like with the additional SEL specialist at MUSE that that person can absorb some of the mentoring and connection work that's happening at MUSE. That, that, the, the work there is not as, I would say, adjacent to court appearances and, you know, law. And I mean, it is really about building connection with kids and trying to get them to come to school. Still important, but we feel like with that additional person there. And then the Dean of Students position that you approved last year, one of the things that we've really realized from that is the impact that that's, that person, Patrick is his name, has been able to have on that community. And we're really leaning in, I think, to that system. And they're able to provide a little more of that. And bringing the homeschool liaison position to a school social work position will expand opportunities K to eight.
You know, as we talked about, now I'm going to interrupt you. The challenge here is to understand how the pieces are interrelated here and how to address them. And that's, that's been an interesting challenge for us.
All right, going on to hiring and operational savings, CIA materials, PD. Okay, band camp.
Everyone looks at me.
Everybody's looking at you, Ken.
So I, I, much like Jenna earlier with language, I will not die on this hill, but I will advocate for it because it's my job to advocate for it. And again, if we have the wiggle room and we have the availability with the number we have here on the bottom line, I would advocate for that to be put back in. As we all know, has been well advertised numerous times. Our music department is a shining star in our district. We are recognized not only on a state level, but also at a regional level for our music department. And I, you know, not to say that we shouldn't be supporting all the departments. And I know I'm, pun intended, preaching to the choir. I know you guys know this. This is why you supported it in the first place. But if we have the ability to add it in, I would, I would advocate for it.
Any other comments on band camp? All right, contingency fund and wellness director moves. Any comments on those?
Yes, I feel like I'm the comments person tonight. What is going on? But so, I'm a little concerned about the contingency fund. Are you sure we're not going to need that? I don't know. That's, I'm maybe a little, I like to have some wiggle room and what if something happens? Contingency fund sounds like something we shouldn't maybe get rid of.
But it's for enrollment. It's not for emergencies.
And you think that, you think that we're perfectly fine?
Our enrollments are so perfect. No, they're not. Of course not.
I believe them.
I'm literally sweating that the thought of getting rid of, rid of a contingency fund.
I, I think now that we're aware of the little bumps that can handle, I think we have accounted for that. Like I said, the Reed's Ferry was a surprise. Usually, it depends what type of structures are being developed in the area, how many kids are going to come out of them. Like on the apartments like Slate and Thornton's Ferry, south end of town, you know, those types of apartments bring, according to demographers, .15 kids. You know, I've never seen a .15 kid, but when you add them all together, it looks like a little bit more comes out of those than, than, than others. It all depends on the developments. Is the level acres near Thornton's Ferry on my way home? I go by it all, level acres, you know? And so it's there, though there's, they're producing some kids. So maybe that was the bump up in there. So. I think we're okay on the contingency. Plus now that we passed the Warren article a couple of years ago, we do have the ability to retain, like last year we retained half a million dollars in, in surplus. I think maybe we'll want to do the same thing or maybe make it 750 or something like that. So for emergency purposes only, not to supplement the budget.
Correct. Yes. And then the last thing I'll say is, so I think, so obviously we're talking about the position of wellness director, but I, I'd be remiss if I didn't say how incredible Sarah is. She does an incredible job of evaluating data and helping to build that MTSS. I mean, I, I got to be part of her team at one point so that we could, to build that MTSS process to support students in every possible way. And she is absolutely phenomenal. I, I do understand absolutely the prioritization of positions that provide direct service with students. And it's hard to be sad knowing that that's the kind of position she's actually moving into. But I just want to say that she is excellent and it is hard to, to get rid of somebody with her at that, at that level.
And one of the reasons we wanted to retain her is that we're hoping that she'll continue to do a lot of that good work through another role that will probably come in the form of a stipend because the Director of School Counseling or Family Engagement or, you know, some of the, a lot of the things that she's doing, we need.
Absolutely. And when you said that she is so valuable to our district in those roles, I'm grateful that we are prioritizing keeping her.
All right, so the two controversial items that have big ticket prices to them is the JMU's language and gifted and talented. So the way I'd like to proceed is to go ahead and take motions on cutting those and take votes on those two. And then we, based on that, we can address the round tables and the band camp. We're in agreement on the rest. I'm going to ask Matt if you can quickly take the bottom line number and track where we are going as we, as we reduce or include.
And Amy will be my backup.
Why is band camp on the list and not Mandarin? You knew I was going to say that, right?
Oh, I do have Mandarin on the list, so I'm sorry.
Right, right, right now we're looking at.
So listen, we need to start with gifted and talented. That was, that, I will make a motion. What, what, what motion am I making? I'm, I may, I will make a motion that we keep the gifted and talented program line items.
Do I have a second?
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, is that too much?
No.
I don't do the math. That's somebody else's job.
If you're talking about keeping the, the gifted and talented personnel and the materials.
Yes, yes.
That's $224,020.
That still keeps us fine, right?
That gets you right there.
Right there.
Right there.
So we get nothing else.
Yep. All right, do I have a second?
Oh, look at that.
The, the motion fails.
Okay.
Okay.
So that one will be going. All right.
JMU's world language, do I have a motion?
Sorry, JMU's world language, do I have a motion?
Oh.
Really?
I move that we, we approve the school, the administration's cut of JMU's world's language.
I second that motion.
Any discussion?
I would just like to say why. I, honestly, it really didn't sit well with me when we cut French, that we were leaving one language. To pick one language over another made no sense to me. And if we are not going to revamp it into a fully new program at this juncture, it feels, I don't think prejudicial is the right word, but it's the only word that's coming to my mind. Like we're picking one language over the other. Both of them are equally valuable. I didn't really want to cut the first one. We combined it into one, but it feels weird to choose one over the other. So in favor of getting more time for art and music, that's why I'm in favor of that.
And I'm going to add that to our goals list for this summer to talk about seventh grade and putting that on our goals. So I'm in favor of the motion. Naomi, did you want to say something? Lori?
Jenna said it all.
I just want to abstain, but, but I will vote.
All right, with that, I'll call the question. All those in favor of cutting JMU's world language? Regrettably, 5-0-0.
So essentially, as of right now, we have reached the goal of the $1.985 million in reduction. five million dollars in reductions with, with your motions. And I'm making the assumption that by the lack of comment on the others, those are being accepted.
Correct.
I'm, I'm still mulling.
Well, we, we have, we have three others that we can consider keeping that we, that we have on the table. So we haven't, we haven't quite finished. We know we're down at the number, but there are some we've considered. Lori?
I was going to say about the Band Camp, because if we, we already didn't meet the number, if we could come back to the table at the school board meeting to discuss what it would cost, if, how we could offset cost, what, with the actual, you know, when you look at the thirty thousand dollars, what is the breakdown of that thirty thousand dollars? How much we, we would have to charge a family to attend, or if there was any way that there's, you know, money that we could, you know, support it.
I'd like to know how administration thinks of what Lori just said.
How we would fund Band Camp.
Well, would you be willing to have a discussion at our May sixth board meeting about what were the numbers, what was the cost, the breakdown, and maybe finding a different way to fund it?
Yes, we're, we're collecting that information from Brendan.
Okay, so for now, we're going to leave it on the cut list, and we'll work towards a solution. Okay. Roundtables, are we leaving those on, or?
I'm wondering if we're allowed to revisit Gifted and Talented because it didn't have a second.
Somebody else can make another, somebody else make a new motion.
I move that we keep the Gifted and Talented at the lower, at the lower elementary in JMU's.
Do I have a second? Discussion. So I'm going to say this very hard, difficult thing to say. It's two hundred and twenty thousand dollars for thirty-two students out of one thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight. For Gifted and Talented, the identified students of Gifted and Talented. But we discussed we'd continue enrichment. Okay, so we're not going to go back and forth here.
Okay.
I'm just, the number, the data, the data that we were given, based on these data numbers, that's what the numbers are. Even two hundred is ten percent of the school population.
Okay.
So that's what the hard thing is about this one.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. There was a motion by Naomi, was it seconded?
Yes.
Jenna, okay.
By Lori.
By Lori.
Okay, more discussion.
So I'm confused now because you just said we made, by making that one cut at JMU's, we are now down to where we need to be? I don't understand.
If you choose to take off this cut list, let's say G and T, you get to your goal.
Okay.
So you restore it to the budget. You have more cuts here than you need.
Okay.
So you're pulling stuff off of this cut list and restoring it back to the budget. So if you want to restore G and T its entirety, that's a motion, we're done.
So here's what happens, though, just to clarify. If you restore Gifted and Talented, all of the costs associated with it personally, you have to now cut these items from the fifty-three thousand, five ninety-two hiring offer down to the SAU contingency, the one, two, three, four, five items at the bottom of this list, to offset if you add that back in to the budget.
Basically, if we keep Gifted and Talented, that's it. That's what, we cannot keep anything else.
That's correct.
That is on this list.
And I'm, I'm in favor of, of keeping Gifted and Talented for all the reasons that I said before. And I will actually also say, I didn't say it in our other discussion, I was keeping track when the public were speaking up in favor of things. We had two folks in favor of Band Camp, we had one person speak up for Roundtables, we had one person speak up for the JMU's Language program, we had one person speak up for Mandarin, and we had five people speak up for Gifted and Talented.
And I appreciate everyone who spoke up, but I don't think that's reflective, that we could use that as a reflective sampling.
So here's what I'll say. I think we're all sitting here saying we didn't really want to cut anything. We had this all here in the budget because we thought it was important. We all just said we'd like to explore how that could be different, and what I'm hearing is we can put that back. And it's the only thing we can put back, but we can put it back.
And what I would say about putting it back, and, and I hear what everyone's saying is, we really do want to move to a new model, but we're not there yet. So let's, if we can put it back, put it back, and then really spend time moving to the new model.
Then I would say that if we move in that direction-
Kids that are involved still get those services, because we're not going to, we're not going to be, with everything that we have to do right now, we're not recreating a new program. We just don't have, we don't have enough of us, and they, we certainly don't have enough administrators, I'm sorry. Like, people think that we, I don't know what they think, but we, this is what we have at this school district right here. So, so I'm in favor, I'm going to be with you.
So I would say, keep in mind that I will bring back the conversation when we hit budget season, that we can't keep it in another year in its current form.
And I actually-
It's going to have to change to a different form.
I agree with you, I absolutely agree with you, but I want to give administration the whole year to be able to do something. I don't want to have, to have them come up with something in, what is it, four months, between now and the start of the next school year.
Yeah, and I think, and I think that's the thing to keep in mind, over this year, you know, building those MTSS teams for academics, which it sounds like you already have, using data to see how we can include more students, and while we have the people here, like, we, we have these positions, so let's use this year to morph them, you know, start to include more people, see how we can use the data to, to change this. Otherwise, we're, we're going to possibly be looking at, yeah, like you said, like, maybe we can't keep this next year, but what, if what, yeah, we can keep it now, and we can try to transform it.
I would just ask as we, if you decide to put that back in, this, the system right now, we have two people that go between four buildings. So right now, you have one person that goes between RFS and TFS, and one person that goes between MES and Muse. And so I just want to be clear, as we move in, we will have to talk about the scope of what your expectations are, because what we've done to this point is prioritized the students that actually qualify. So that number of thirty-two are the pullout services. So if you think about it, just like special ed, and I was originally licensed in Pennsylvania and wrote IEPs for gifted students, so whoever said that earlier, it is an exceptionality, right? We don't do that in New Hampshire, we are a categorical approach to special education, not a noncategorical approach. So I just, what I worry about right now is those two teachers are already spread very thin. We have families that their student doesn't meet the criteria, they really, you know, they really want them to be in, I mean, it, right now, the enrichment, the way we've done it is, we try to make it open to as many students as possible. But if we're going to look at revamping it, I would just want some very clear, you know, direction from you, because right now, I've told them, you have to prioritize the kids that qualify. If we're moving to an enrichment model, which is what most districts have done, you know, beginning probably in the early, late nineteen nineties, early two thousands, they went to an enrichment coordinator, right? Someone like what Mrs. Angel was doing at the middle and high school, right? Facilitating opportunities for all students. It wasn't targeted just at a small population. I just worry about overextending them even more with a nebulous directive to provide enrichment to, you know, a thousand kids almost between two buildings. And I'm just saying, it, it's, it's a tough system already, which is why it made it on this list. In addition to being antiquated, there isn't a lot of quantitative data that goes along with this population. These are kids that are already at the ninety-eighth percentile and above on I Ready. They're already the students academically, they're, you know, those criteria are built in. So I'm happy to do it and do the work. I just, you know, want to be able to say that, that we'll take the charge and do what, you know, what is needed, but we would just need to be very clear. Because if you want enrichment for all kids and direct service to students, that is not, that, you know, we're, it's not best practice.
But that's why we were talking about the co-curricular.
That's for next year, so, I mean, this is not for, this is for the future, for next year, we're going to go straight with what we're doing now, and then we're going to, we're going to work with you to come up with this great plan.
And that's why I felt like keeping it for the, for the extra year, to, to give us some breathing space, to look at what are the challenges, what are the possibilities, what are the best practices? I don't want to overburden you, or them.
Any other discussion? All right, with that, I will call the question. Keep it in, into our budget, not cutting it from this budget. That is what we're voting on. So all those in favor of keeping G and T for another year? Five zero zero. Everybody's really slow there.
All right. So- I thought you were going to say something else.
So to offset?
We have to offset, guys.
That means that essentially, you will be approving the reductions of Hiring and Operational Savings, the curriculum and instruction materials, PD mentors, the band, summer band activity, and the contingency amount. That, that approximates the cost of restoring Gifted and Talented. So essentially, without any additional changes, we're there at the one point nine eight five million.
All right. Well, with that, any other comments from the board? Any other thing you want to discuss? Lori?
I just, I just want to again thank our administration for the incredible job they did. There wasn't a lot of turnaround time, and I know the amount of hours that they spent and the amount of data that they gathered to come to this meeting tonight to present, which they didn't, they didn't know. I, I appreciate everybody in the audience, too, because this wasn't a hostile environment, which we really didn't know what we were coming to. I appreciate that we're going to work together, that we're going to be better, that this, this budget failed, it was a default budget, but we're going to get better, and we're going to work together. And so thank you, and thank you for the audience tonight.
So my comments are going to be kind of similar. I, I know how stressful this was for all of you, I know I lost sleep, I'm sure you all lost sleep, I'm sure you all lost sleep. What I'm grateful for, though, is that both times we've talked about cuts and you've come with cuts. You have, I likened it this week when somebody asked me to somebody, when, when somebody's diagnosed with brain cancer, right? And you don't go in there and you just, you know, carelessly cut it out, you have to be very, very careful, and you have to cut the margins exactly right to make sure that you keep the person as whole as possible while moving forward. I don't know anything about surgery, so I'm just, you know, kind of guessing, but like, that's what it felt like you did when you handed us these cuts. It felt like you very carefully cut the, just around the margins of exactly what needed to be done, thoughtfully and meaningfully, painfully, for, for everybody, but so that the integrity of the whole could be as maintained as possible. And I just want this community to know that we owe them a huge debt of gratitude, because this could have been so much worse than it was, and they did the hard work so that we could come tonight and, to do this, and it was so much less painful than it would have been if you all didn't put the time, effort, and energy. So thank you to all of you, all of you here, thank you to the leadership team that met. I know the deliberations could not have been easy, and I know it must have been stressful. And from the bottom of my heart, I thought this was going to be so much worse. I'm so grateful, even though things that, if directly affected my kids were cut, I am so grateful for all of your hard work.
Yeah, thank you. And, and I will say, in a reciprocal manner, we, we appreciate the fact that you're not focused on politics, you're focused on the needs of students and the well-being of staff also, and that, that means everything to us.
Ken?
Yeah, and I'll just, I'll make a quick, this was probably one of the hardest things I've had to do while on the board, even harder than getting up in front of four hundred people and say we should buy a six point nine million dollar building. This was way harder than that. And I have, again, a tremendous appreciation for the hours that went into this piece of paper here, just the conversations between administrators at our schools, who also should deserve credit for part of this discussion because they were also involved, and the folks in our schools who are supporting them. This was, yeah, in many ways was like sort of a nightmare scenario, but we, we ripped the Band-Aid off in a way that was as painless as possible. And of course, we'll be second guessing all of these decisions and discussions for probably the next several months until school starts next year. But I can walk away tonight and say that we did the best we possibly could, and I'm proud to be a part of the process with such a great group of people who sat down and really made sure that this was the right move with what we had for our kids. So thank you again.
Naomi?
I want to recognize the staff, especially the staff who are affected by this. I just want to take a moment for them.
And I will wrap up by saying I appreciate the staff who have stepped up and been willing to move positions, change positions, retire, and face new challenges they weren't expecting to face for next year. And that takes a great deal of courage and commitment to the students, to the families, to the district, and so I appreciate them as well. I'd like to echo the same sentiments. I know this was very, very difficult, and it was endless hours and lots of meetings, and you involved many stakeholders in your deliberations, which is a testimony to your commitment to student success here in the district, and your building leadership, and your leadership team. That is wonderful, the amount of time that you have spent with every person that needed to be involved with this, in such a short amount of time that we had to deliver that, deliver this. For families, I'm so glad you came out, and that you shared your thoughts, and for all the people who came worried about sports, thank you, that you came, and for those who felt like they could leave, I totally understand, because we did not want to touch athletics. And so thank you for coming out and supporting our amazing athletics here in Merrimack. And to my fellow board members, none of us wanted to be here tonight, we supported the original budget, we believed in it, and this was very, very difficult, but I think as a team with administration, we have met the will of the voters tonight, and we are moving forward to a bright future. With that, I'm going to open up the mic for our last round of public comment.
Good evening. Still Heather Robitaille, still at forty-five Springfield Field Circle, haven't moved from my bench. I just wanted to say thank you for everyone, for their discussion, for their thought, and for voting to retain the Gifted and Talented program for the elementary school levels. I think that we know that these academically high performers are a specific population with unique needs, and it's our job as a district to make sure that we are addressing those needs. So I look forward to seeing how this evolves in future goal meetings and in our district. It's not simply enrichment as a tier-one approach, it is truly what these students need, and I, I believe we can meet those needs. I'd also like to just thank all the staff that we have in our district, those who are impacted, who we will obviously miss, and those who didn't lose their jobs but are losing friends and coworkers. We are all impacted by this, we're all part of this community. I appreciate every last staff member in our district who does what they do because they love it, they love our kids, and they're deeply appreciated. Thank you.
Jennifer McCormick, thirty-four Kramer Hill Road. Just wanted to say that I love the line of thinking across the board and the administration in terms of expanding co-curriculars, thinking outside the box, thinking of ways to get the same outcomes with different process. I think some really great work has been done here tonight, and I, I hope that, you know, some more great ideas come up over the summer as you guys move through your next stage of thinking. I also want to remind the administration that now that there is not going to be a language program at JMU's, there were some concerns raised at the Budget Committee meetings about the Unified Arts rotations and kind of trying to figure out that scheduling a little bit better, so I just want to remind you about that as you go into your summer planning as well. Thank you.
Melanie Curran, one twenty-two Joppa Road. Just a couple of things. One, thank you all so much for your consideration and for hearing what everybody in the audience said today, it's very appreciated. There was somebody that made a comment about cutting a district leadership, and I just want to say that I'm not quite sure how Merrimack manages their leadership responsibilities with as few people as sit in your office, so thank you for that. I don't think we could ever afford to cut any other district leadership. As a matter of fact, I'm pretty sure we need more of those people. So thank you for what you do. Board, you have a very challenging position, certainly, so thank you for hearing us. I did just want to say when the Yes program was being spoken- I did just wanna say when the YES program was being spoken about and needing to unfortunately cut that position, the state puts out, and works with a company called Graduated Alliance, I don't know if you're familiar with that company. We, I have worked with that company specifically for kids for attendance and tardiness issues, and they've been a great resource to families. I know that our staff cannot be put in the position of going out to homes for a variety of reasons, safety being the top, insurance being another great barrier there, but Graduated Alliance has been an excellent resource for our school district, and I just think that that's just another avenue, it's a free service, so it's definitely another avenue that we could utilize to help families in order to offset some of that YES loss there. So thank you all very much.
A little shorter. Kaitlin Kelly Burnier, 2 Birch Street. I just wanted to thank you all tonight for listening to everybody that came out, everybody that spoke, and for hearing us and keeping the Gifted and Talented and reworking it and all those things, not obviously this coming year, but in the future to include more students in it. And I just wanna thank our community for coming out and speaking tonight and being passionate about things that matter to us. Thank you.
Timothy Bevis. Although I'm disappointed that this year we, in these budget cuts and everything, we had to discuss the World Language and the Gifted and Talented programs and all of that across the district as a whole. I'm really appreciative of all of the work that you guys did, and although I was the student who facilitated quite a few students to come and speak on the World Language program, the Gifted and Talented program at the Budget Committee meeting, a school board meeting, and the deliberative session where I couldn't speak, but I had people speaking through me. It was really appreciative to see all of your hard work. I know all of you did way more than the students know, than a lot of the students know. I think me and Finn might be the only ones. But I'm really appreciative, and something my history teacher says is, "I have two things in this life, my name and my word," and after tonight, I hope you all really stick to your word on reforming the Gifted and Talented programs, making sure those are better in the future, and making sure the World Language programs across the district remain intact and students can have the opportunities to go explore Arabic, Mandarin, explore French and Spanish at a lower level, possibly like tutoring from higher-level students. I think that would be cool to see. I'm really looking forward to all of the work that y'all are gonna do over the next year, so, thank you.
Well, thank you for that. Well, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Seconded by Ken, all in favor? Aye, 5-0-0. Thank you and good night.